All right, good evening, everyone. We will call this meeting of the Memphis School Board of Education to order at seven o'clock, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
You're stopping the bad guy. You just push the flash down.
All right, we'll start with board roll call.
Okay, Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Paray.
Here.
Mrs. McHugh. Here. Mr. Cook.
Present.
Mr. Mrs. O'Connor. Mrs. Bobstein.
Here.
Mrs. Durst.
Present.
Okay, thank you, we have all seven board members present tonight. Next is adoption for amendment to the agenda. And I believe we wanted to add, under new business, item D, I would like to add assisting coach discussion. And then item E, future board meeting in person. Do we have any other amendments to the agenda?
No, there are no other amendments.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion for adoption or amendment of the agenda, then.
This is Karen, and I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Susan, now, and I support that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mrs. Durst, to adopt the amended agenda for July 27th, as presented. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Hey, Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Paray. Mr. Paray.
All right, guys, I lost sound for the last minute. Is this the approval for the amendment of the agenda?
Yes.
Support.
Mr.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein.
Yes.
And Mrs. Durst.
Yep.
Okay, we have a unanimous yes, seven of seven, and a motion carried. Next up is the point in the virtual meeting when we take registration of public comment, so it's at this time that if you would like to make public comments later on in the meeting, this is the point where we would collect your information, so that we can coordinate that in a orderly manner. So is there anyone wishing to make public comment this evening? If so, we would like to have your name and your last two digits for your phone number, so you can be unmuted.
Yeah, this is Jeff Christie, I'd like to speak, last two is seven eight.
Okay, thank you. Is there any others? All right, thank you, we have one registered for public comment, Mr. Christie. Next up, we have the consent agenda, item six.
Good evening, under the consent agenda, you are approving the minutes from the regular meeting on June 22nd, 2020, as presented. You're also approving general fund bills on the amount of $342,411.95, and AP payroll checks in the amount of $4,181.37, for a total of $366,593.32, with checks numbered 65206 through 65282, and ACH transfers in the amount of $671,785.87, for a total of $1,038,379.19, and no checks voided. Sinking fund bills in the amount of $9,745.0, check number 40023, with no checks voided, and additional bills in the amount of $32,280.22, with check numbers 65283 through 65289, and no checks voided. Under personnel, the resignations of Brooke Miller, daycare thomet, Chris Snezak, coaching class sponsor, and the hiring of Dylan Wansey, elementary secretary. And I believe we've removed the coaches' recommendations, is that correct? Or, actually, I guess we have not, it was just assistant coaches. So along with the consent agenda, the coaches' recommendations for fall of 2020. Sorry about that.
Do we have support for Mr. Cook's motion?
This is Agri, I support the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. O'Connor. We'll take a roll call vote.
Hey, Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Paray.
Yes.
Miss McHugh. Yes. Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor. Mrs. Bobstein.
Yes.
And Mrs. Durst.
Yes. Thank you.
Seven of seven, motion carried. Now we're on to reports. We'll start with Mr. Oki, please, athletic director.
Good evening, everybody, how's everyone doing? Can you hear me?
Good, thank you. Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Oki.
Good, fantastic. I did expect to go on this quick, so let me get it here real quick. Okay. You know, first off, wanted to start off with, you know, we've had our practices going on now for well over a month, our conditioning programs. You know, I've got to give a big complimentary, not only to our coaches, but to all the kids and the parents as well, because, I tell you, kids are showing up, all the athletes are showing up, right when they're supposed to, they've been accommodating. Parents are sticking around and make sure everything goes smoothly. And, you know, coaches have done a fantastic job as well, you know, doing the daily checks at every single practice. I'm proud that we've, you know, had a couple of kids that showed up maybe with a concern, and we got them in the shade, stuff like that, everything looks good after that. As you know, there's been now three schools that, three neighboring schools that we either participate with or are involved with that have shut down completely because of it, and because of COVID. So, you know, we're very proud at how we've been working with our kids, with our coaches, and a huge complimentary, I mean, I don't think people really understand just how much effort they've put into making this whole thing go smoothies that asked for a month. In short, with all the whole thing, there will be a conference this Wednesday. I can tell you that up to this date, right now, the plan is to move forward with fall sports at a normal time. But there will be a huge athletic director virtual meeting on Wednesday, and we anticipate, if not Wednesday night, Thursday morning, we'll hear from, I'm going to say Representative Mark Yule, on the status. Without speculating, being too speculative of what's going to take place, some of the biggest things are, there's a good chance that one of three things will happen. One, that we get off on the 12th, 10th, and the 12th of August, like normal, move forward. The second option is, and I think we're looking at more and more likely, is that we will be moving fall sports to a potential August 31st start time, which means then we would be able to start practicing officially August 31st, and then I'll be up to each league. So what would happen is a lot of our non-league schedules will then be canceled, and it would probably just more or less be a, it'll be definitely a shortened season. The third option that they're looking at is where the schools, or the seasons will switch, and what they'll do is they'll move winter sports up to like a November 1st start date, rather than mid-November, end of November, so end of October, November, winter sports start time. November, December, January, of course, you have playoffs at that point, and it should be over by February, and then fall sports would begin. And so fall sports would basically begin around March 1st, which is a few weeks before usually springtime sports start. And fall sports would then go March, April, into May. Springtime sports then would go the middle of May, you know, so to speak, until the end of July. So that is some of the three, three things that they're looking at. You know, our biggest hope as ADs and coaches and as schools, I'm sure, is to make sure that these, hopefully, you know, the kids are safe first, but that hopefully we can get all three seasons in. So if you have any questions with that, that's basically where we're at, you know, right now, regarding the three sports seasons. But until then, we can do our conditioning outside, our weightlifting outside, our volleyball, you know, football, have we do this across country, started conditioning, so all our fall sports right now are in conditioning mode. And we've also had a number of athletes from, from winter sports, as well as spring sports showing up for conditioning. So it's actually somewhat of an exciting time, but I think everybody's itching to get to the next level. But again, I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate everyone, coaches, parents, administration, I mean, administration, and I've been seen out there, as well as, you know, the athletes themselves, so thank you to everybody.
You still with us, Mr. Oki?
Are you there? Okay, there he is. I don't know what happened there. What's the last thing you heard, Mr. Ryan?
You had just finished off, speaking of conditioning, and
Okay, yeah, I don't know what happened there, thank you for letting me know. Just congratulations to everybody involved with the conditioning. They've all done a great job, and, you know, all their teams, athletes, parents, administration, coaches, everyone's done a great job there. What I did is I then went to, we were unfortunate, through some health conditions, our football coach, Mr. Mark Brimmer, had to resign last week. You know, took us by surprise and shock, we were very disappointed. Mark showed a lot of, a lot of promise that, you know, getting our program where we want to get it, equal, equal or greater than a lot of the programs, all the other programs we had at Memphis. But we're very fortunate, I mean, very fortunate, that we immediately jumped on the phones and start getting people to see if there was an interest. We've had a number of people apply. Very exciting times in that regard, just bad timing. But we're very fortunate that we had brought in a head coach under our program to have him approved as an assistant coach, who has been not only working with the kids since about November, November, December, but he also, you know, definitely came to a lot of Memphis events, boys, girls, basketball games, has worked with the kids. And so one of my recommendations is to move Todd Stump, who has six years of coaching, head coaching high school, under his belt, and he is who I would nominate later on when we go through that, as our new head football coach. We've also worked very hard at interviewing several other candidates to bring him on as assistant coaches, because unfortunately with Mark leaving Memphis, two of the assistants have left with him. So we have put together, though, in a very short time, a very comparable staff, and in some ways, I think, some people that are really going to be able to take our program, you know, to the next step and to the next level. So we were very fortunate, and hopefully in recommending Todd Stump as our new football coach. Our volleyball, I'm sorry. Any questions with any of that? Okay. Our other coaches, Logan Claire, you know, we're looking to nominate him as the head volleyball coach. His whole program has worked as tirelessly as anyone else. He's been communicating fantastically to the community with the kids, and our practices have, I don't think we've had less than 25 girls at our practice, so he's done a fantastic job, we're excited to bring Logan into the program, and of course Kelly Clark and Leah Welch have done a fantastic job of continuing with the cheerleaders. We are proud to say that even though we didn't have a spring season, this past weekend, there was an All-Star game held at Vassar for the East and West of our league, and we had four boys represent Memphis, four senior boys represent Memphis, and they got a chance to wear the Memphis uniform for the last time, and we're very proud of them. And we also had one girl softball player that was, also had made the All-Star team. So at least our seniors were able to represent Memphis and wear the uniform one last time. It was an exciting time. The athletic boosters, they're, they're moving along like nothing's changed. They held a meeting last week, we had a few changes in officers, but their employees, I think we had about close to 20 people at the last couple booster meetings over the summer. They're always looking for more young help, but they, I mean, they're just doing a great job, they've got things planned, whether we have sports, don't have sports, you know, crowds able to attend or not, they're coming up with all kinds of fundraisers. And we're very fortunate to have the best booster club I've ever been associated with, so in that regard, until we go, I guess, with the coaches or the scheduled seat, assistant coaches, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Oki. And we did approve the fall coaches and consent agenda.
Oh, that's great, that's great, Mr. Ryan. Thank you to the school board, thank you to Mr. Goodman, him and I had a chance to talk several weeks ago, we thought we had it knocked down, didn't we, Brad? But, you know, things happen, I can just tell you, I assure you that we, we have a fantastic football staff, ready to go to work with our boys. So thank you for the approval of all our new coaches.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the next report from the Transportation and Facilities Director, Mr. Kujet, do you have some highlighted items for the board?
You know, just what's in my report, I guess. We've started replacing some of the ceiling tiles in the high school again, now that the roof seems to be repaired. Waxing is all going very well, looks like we should have that done by the end of the week in both buildings. We've repainted the entire junior high, high school main hallways, where the white walls were, that you could see through and see the concrete through, as well as all the dirt and grime over the years. So that's all been repainted, looks very nice. We still need to get the pictures back up on the walls still, but the painting is all done. New buses should be here on Wednesday. And the biggest thing we've had recently is we did discover that, you know, a very hot section in the elementary school that just seemed like every time we walked down the hallway, sun was always shining, and it just seemed like that section of the school just got extremely hot. After about two weeks, we realized that the floor was warm, and some of the tiles were starting to bubble, where we discovered that one of the old lines that never got capped off when they redid the plumbing in the building, either in 01 or 08, had ruptured somewhere underground and was filling up the tunnels. So we shut the water down, got it all to drain out, brought in a plumber who's hopefully going to be here next week, he had to order some parts to cap that off, and hopefully that's all it is, and we can move on and get the hot water back out of the building. We still have water, we're just missing the hot water down that hallway right now. Most of our hand sanitizers, disinfectants, soaps have all come in, we've ordered our sneeze guards to put up in the offices, hopefully we'll be getting those this week, be able to get going on those. And things seem to be moving along pretty well, I think we're about two weeks ahead of where we were last year, even getting all the painting done, so things are looking pretty nice.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on the, on the facilities and transportation report? All right, thank you, next we'll move on to Mr. Walsh, Business Director.
Hello, everybody. We had just a couple of highlights on my board reports. The biggest one being, last Wednesday, State Budget Director had announced that there was an agreement reached between State of Michigan House, Senate, and Governor Whitmer, finalizing some plans to shore up the fiscal year 20 state budget. So essentially, the state budget that ends September 30th, 2020. This would be the fiscal year that affects all of the state funding for the year ended, our, our year ended June 30th, 2020. So essentially, what they were looking at, they were looking at about a $1 billion deficit in the state aid fund, that there was a lot of discussion, and as you know, we've had many discussions, I'm going to present it to the board, some different options that the state was looking to do. Looks like they have agreed upon a couple different things, in one being that they are reducing the state aid foundation allowance of approximately $175 per student. However, they are increasing at a two to one rate, meaning for every $1 that they're reducing at the state level, they are replacing or supplementing that with federal dollars at a time, two times that reduction. So essentially, what it turns out to be for each school district is an approximately $175 reduction per student, increase of $350 per student, so a net of approximately $175 per student. Again, I want to emphasize, that is for fiscal year 2020. So that's the year since that just, that we just closed out budgets, because our budget was passed and approved on June 30th, as was every other school district in the state. There won't be any adjustment or amendments done to that June 30th budget that was approved this fall, just the accounting will be done for it and reflected in our audit, financial statements. It's still undetermined at this point, what that funding is going to look like as far as how that's going to be delivered to students, or to districts, and if, if there will be any restrictions on those, those funds at all. So those funds mainly consist of, amongst others, there was $350 million from the state rainy day fund, and then there was some, some money that was freed up by the federal government, WCAZ, so it's additional funding from that as well. So there's still a possibility that those could be restricted and used, you know, whatever reason they say, if it's just COVID-related expense or whatever that may be. That's undetermined at this point, what that additional $175 per student will be able to be used for. Hope to have some language coming out within the next week or two, that will discuss those options and say how that's going to be delivered to districts, and what we can use those funds for. At the time, that has not been specified. It looks like it will most likely be reflected in our August state aid payment, which we get in mid-August. So hopefully the language will come out in the next week or two, so we can prepare for receiving those funds in mid-August. Again, I will continue to monitor that and watch for the, the language to come out of that, and then work with Brad as soon as that information comes out, to make sure that we are accounting for it correctly and handling it correctly and have a good handle on it. As far as next year's budget and what next year's state aid funding will look like, still don't have any answers on that. So kind of looks like there's a, there's a revenue consensus meeting at the end of August from, at the, at the state level, and it looks like we really probably won't have any additional information out until after what they, what they can get a better handle on those projection, projected revenues for next year will be. What we do know at this point is that the state is still lobbying for additional federal funds to help supplement the loss. They do still project a loss next year, which would, which are per pupil foundation allowance, but they, they are still lobbying from federal government for additional stimulus dollars. So again, I will continue to, to watch that situation closely and keep, keep up to date with Brad as, as information comes out, to make sure that we are reacting accordingly. And then the other thing I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of was that our audit starts, our annual audit will begin this coming Monday, so for the last few weeks and this week, I'm deep into audit preparations, in a good shape at this point. Official audit will be August 3rd through 7th. One thing that's going to be a little different this year compared to years past is talking with the lead auditor call, they are going to be performing this audit, majority will be done remotely. So I will be providing them, and I have been providing them with requested information, they will, will work remotely from their office, just due to the current state of the coronavirus and the current pandemic. So this is just kind of a special option here, and they will, will be coming on, on campus to the district at least one day with minimal staff, just to do some of the audit duties that are required in person, so trying to limit their time in here for, for our staff safety and for their own state's safety as well. And then I think that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Walsh from the board? Nope.
David, it's Martin Cook. Are we talking separately about the internal funds, is that a separate report we're going to discuss, or is that part of this report?
That's within the reports, the budget, so it, we can discuss it as part of this.
Thanks. So Adam, thanks for the information. Thanks. So Adam, thanks for the information. Um, although, and, and I'm sure this information already exists, especially if we're going to au- uh, audit August 3rd, uh, just a couple of days. Um, so I appreciate the information. It, it looks like this information's about 26 days worth of this year, 7/1/20, uh, through whenever this was sent. Um, I, I would like to see the previous fiscal year, same information, both the general ledger and the detail. I think that's more what, uh, I personally was asking for as treasure. So it, it, and obviously the audit is, is, uh, takes precedence over that request, but I'd like to see this on a regular basis, but I would like to review last year's. Um, this really just has balances and one or two dispersments. Uh, it would be good to see what an entire year looks like.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem at all. I can actually, you know, even with, with working through the audit here, I can get you that, uh, in a very short time. I, and I do apologize. I, I wasn't, uh, exactly sure how much data you wanted. I didn't wanna overload you with information you didn't want, but I will absolutely give you last fiscal year. And then a- as I present these each month now, it will contain kind of a rolling year balance. So I'll give you last year so you can have the history there and then, you know, next month it will, it will have July and August activity in there and then we'll continue that up here.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yep, no problem.
Uh, any other questions from the board for Mr. Walsh? Alright, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to Mrs. Hankins, uh, update on the elementary report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I've included my report. Um, I see that it's linked in the agenda. Um, I have the plans in there for the book hive that, um, continues to kind of be on hold as we work through getting this school, um, year started off, but it's still, um, on our minds and we're working closely, looking closely at when we can get to the, um, bus. I had a meeting today with, um, the elementary return to learn committee. So this is a committee of teachers, parapros, secretaries, and we are just kind of looking over phase four of the return to learn roadmap and kind of planning on what that looks like for everybody in our building and how we can meet all of the requirements that are laid out in that plan. We will continue to meet weekly and get that information out to staff, um, so they can begin to prepare for the upcoming school year. Um, I'm very happy with the group. They are volunteering to come in this summer and they're providing a lot of great ideas to help us get through this very strange time. So I'm very grateful for them, um, for coming in the summer and helping us plan through phase four reopening. Um, I did include in my report some staff changes that took place. Um, these changes just took place based on numbers of students. We're currently at 62 students registered for kindergarten and that includes, includes our developmental kindergarten program, which was formerly known as junior five. Um, same program, different name. I really wanted to compliment, um, Craig and his team. Our building looks great. The floors look wonderful. Um, we also got a little bit of paint updated in our office and it was a nice little facelift on the building. I know how hard they've been working to get everything up and running for next year and finishing off the previous school year. Gail and Jennifer and Delin have been working their tails off too in the office. It's a very big transition in there. Um, Gail and Jennifer work one day a week training together and then Jennifer spends a day training Delin and then they're still doing their other duties within there. So those ladies are working really hard and I'm very grateful to them, um, for making this transition be as seamless as possible. I've also included a little information about our PD days that are coming up in August. Those, um, continue to be planned. Um, I spoke a little bit last time about us, uh, and the wonderful opportunity we have to become a lab school. So, um, a lot of time at the start of the school year will be spent learning about that and, um, getting feedback from teachers so we could make this as friendly for them as possible and they can get as most, as much out of it as possible. Um, I think that's about all I have right now. We just are continuing to work as hard as we can to make sure next school year goes off without a hitch. And I plan on hosting some more, um, live virtual coffee with the principals as soon as we have a little more answers that I can provide to parents. So I'll hopefully have those at least weekly as more information comes out. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mrs. Hankins, any questions from the board for Mrs. Hankins regarding the report? Alright, thank you, Mrs. Hankins. We'll move on to Mr. Krappa, the junior high high school.
Hello, everybody. Uh, thank you for, uh, having me here tonight at the board meeting. Um, I want to start things off, just kind of run over a couple of things that I have, uh, in my, my report there. Um, of course, as soon as I said that, what could happen? Uh, okay, here it is. A couple of things, uh, you know, with graduation, uh, not too long ago. It seems like it was forever ago. It took forever to get there. It went past. It's over now, uh, but there is a link. Uh, I did not include it in there, but I do have it. So I will put it in there on the top line there just before, uh, before I leave here today, uh, before the meeting's over. I'll put the link in here on the top for you guys. Um, really great video channel pick, great job. Um, uh, really good. Another part of that whole graduation for the students is we had pictures taken. Uh, Doc Smith was there taking pictures. She took about three pictures of each graduate. Uh, we went through and we kind of looked through the best ones, uh, and we bought little sleeves for those pictures. Each student, well, we emailed, we mailed those out, uh, on Thursday last week. So each student will get a copy of that picture of their graduation, uh, when they were on the stage. Uh, and also Channel 16 said that they do have the videos on USB or CD for purchase. I will, I will put that information, I'll send that information out as well to the students into the, and maybe post on to our social media, but if they don't want to purchase that, I think they're $16 for USB or, or something like that, or 10, 10, $12 for USB. Uh, oh, there's the, there's the link right there. So, uh, thanks. Uh, Mr. Goodman put that up there. Thanks Brad for that. Uh, so, and like Mrs. Hankins said, a lot of planning going on. Um, we're working around the wax at our school. So we're really trying to make sure we all step in and walk across those areas, even other signs. We still do have some mistakes happening here and there, but that's not on our, not on our cleaning crew that's on us. Um, the PBIF team did meet a couple of weeks ago to, uh, talk about coming back, kicking things off, what it's gonna look like this year, how different is our, uh, PBIF kickoff or, or opening week of school gonna look, uh, compared to how it's been in the past. And the PBIF team was really helpful. They gave us a lot of great information. They helped us, uh, Mr. Gersteburger and myself were discussing, uh, procedures for Chromebooks next year, uh, for our students. So, uh, really great information. There was, uh, I believe eight, uh, two, four, six, eight teachers at the meeting, including myself, or, or, and not including myself. And, um, it was a good meeting for the team to get back and see everybody and kind of start planning. So, uh, uh, again, as we get more info, we, we get it out there slowly for the staff and to our parents. Um, and looking forward to having everything finalized very soon for, for coming back to school. Um, another, another thing we're gonna be doing next week is planning for Yellow Jacket Day. Uh, we're looking to, hopefully, you know, our goal is to have that in person and we're go, we're looking to have that event outdoors at the junior high school. Uh, trying to figure out some ways to make it accessible to everybody outdoors, scattering some times for different grade levels. Uh, so we meet, uh, uh, on Thursday this week. So, uh, I should have some more information for you. Definitely by our next board meeting. Well, that'll be, probably too late. So you'll hear from us before that about our planning for Yellow Jacket Day, uh, in August. Uh, summer learning is underway, uh, today as a matter of fact. Mr. Gersteburger, myself, Mr. Corbett, um, Mrs., uh, Ms. Smith went over. Uh, what happened was, you, you, you may not, you may not know this, but grad points updated and the classes we had in our grad point have to be updated as well. So our students were enrolled under the old classes. Today what we had to do was identify those classes, switch them to the new version on Gradpoint and then switch the students over and then email all of them to let them know. So we did, we're able to do that today. So I will say that our summer learning is up and going and our students are working away. A lot of them getting their credits back that they may have missed the path, um, and catching up. So I think it's been a, 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 a decent start to our summer for, at least at the high school level. We don't have as many junior high students participating as we wish. I think there's only a few. Um, but we look to try to, uh, get those students back on track as we start the school year as well. Um, uh, sad news that prom was canceled. Mrs. Stark and Mrs. Smith sent out a survey to, um, uh, the students, uh, we, between junior high, excuse me, senior, juniors and seniors. Uh, turns out she, Mrs. Stark said there was 30 students in all that were interested in still having the event. Of the 30, I think 15 wanted it to be, uh, outside, 15 wanted it to be, you know, somewhere. So it was, it was very scattered. Unfortunately, I think that the, um, the way things kind of worked out is, you know, no, no prom this year, but Mrs. Stark is still going through with the king and queen. She's sending out the information to the students to vote for a prom king and queen. She wants the students to dress up and virtually sending their pictures of how they would look on prom. So we're hoping to get a lot of good, um, response from our students and so. Finally, I just talked a little bit about the hallway. Again, everything looks great. Uh, the crew is really doing a great job. Uh, the crew is really doing a great job of picking things up. Um, I included a couple of the links there for some information that's quite helpful, including a, a new year's review procedure and, uh, an idea, a little bit of a, kind of an idea of what our media center might look like for what the remodel plan. And also Mr. Goodman mentioned that some of the money is raised in the golf fundraiser. Those are going towards that. I do have a kind of a mock-up there and Mr. Gersteburger and I were actually speaking about the, um, technology we'd like to order for the library and also speaking with Ms. Smith today about kind of the redesign. We're looking to do that. Uh, the, the ordering for the Chromebooks is probably close to, um, five, four to five months out. So if we order now, we might get them, Brian says, maybe by October, November, December. Uh, so we're looking to do something that kind of have a remodel type look to our board, uh, excuse me, to our library, our media center by the second semester of this coming school year. Um, and included in that would be possibly an upgrade for the school board once we get back into our face-to-face meetings, little upgrade of the, of the, uh, school board, uh, I guess the presentation of the school board. So, um, look for those, kind of cruise those, uh, key areas as you wish. And, um, that is all that I have for right now. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Krappa. Any questions from the board? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, we have the public comment. Um, please keep in mind that, uh, no student should be mentioned by name and, um, we limit, uh, this portion to three minutes per speaker. And, um, complaints against school employees or board members, um, should follow policy 9130, which is the, the complaint, um, chain of command procedure. So I think we had one, we, we did just have one person registered for public comment, um, this evening. So, uh, Goodman, if you can unmute.
I'm coming here.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Christie.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Um, I've got a couple of questions. Um, I don't know where to start with this, so I'm just gonna dive in. Is that alright with everybody?
Yep.
I'm at work last, I, I, I got notified by the local newspaper that there was some kind of an issue with, uh, the parade for the kids and the flag in the back of the truck. Is, is everyone here aware of this, um, this article in the newspaper?
Yes, we're aware. We're gonna have, um, it actually on our agenda to, um, discuss later.
Would you like me to hold off from talking about that till after you discuss it?
No.
I could comment on that?
No, please go ahead and proceed with your comment.
So I'd be happy to just comment on the middle school and the boiler and the tunnel and then all that if you'd like. You'd like to come back to that if you'd like.
No, this is the time in the meeting that we have set aside for public comment.
Okay, so perfect. Um, I just, I really wasn't involved in this until I got, someone gave them my phone number and I have the newspaper contact me at work. And, uh, it kind of got me involved in it. Now I'm, now I'm on, now I'm aware. So, but I started reading and I'm starting to have questions about this. So I was wondering if, if Mr. Goodman could clarify something. Um, he, I read in the paper and I don't know if he was quoted correctly, but he made a statement that he had no knowledge of this flag in the truck and, uh, or any permission to fly it. Could, is there any way he could possibly clarify that? Because maybe, maybe they misquoted him and, and, and I didn't read it correctly. So is there, is there any possible way he could clarify that statement?
Typically, Mr. Christie, we don't respond to public comments, but we ask the superintendent to follow up with, with those making comment and questions after the meeting.
Okay. Well, then I guess I will just speak, I'll just speak on my own, I, I, it won't be interactive then. I'll just tell you that Mr. Krappa originally said that he was not going to allow this flag to be flown in this truck. And I didn't agree with Mr. Krappa. After, I took to Mr. Goodman and I spoke to him personally and, and we were able to find some middle ground. And I was very happy that Mr. Goodman was able to work with me. And we basically agreed upon when this flag could be flown and when it, when we could have it covered up. And, uh, the, the outcome was, I thought was reasonable that while it was sitting, you know, when he drives it to the school and from the school, he could fly his flag however he wants. If he goes to pub, any events, he could fly his flag. We agreed that while it was sitting there during the day, we would actually put a cover over it, like a PVC sleeve and it would be covered up while it's just sitting there during the day. Um, I was actually happy with that and I, and I applauded Mr. Goodman for meeting me halfway and we worked through, we had some, you know, we, we have, sometimes you have to work with people and I, and I like that. But what I don't understand is, I'm a little confused, is how now after the fact, I understand there's some heat brought to this issue after this, but now we've got people denying that conversations even took place. And, uh, that is why, I, what I was hoping we could address. Um, I also see that he, I mean, I'm, I'm just reading. You guys brought me into this. I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't, I really don't want to be a part of this, but now that I'm here, I'm here. Um, I noticed that, you know, so there's no prior knowledge of, of any of the flag stuff, but I remember, but I've had conversations with him and I think Mr. Krappa has too. Uh, we, he was involved in the conversation. So Mr. Krappa could be a, a character with us that says, yes, we had this conversation and it did take place. So there was permission given. So there's a little, there's some kind of discrepancy on who's telling the truth there. Um, knowledge of the parade, you guys, we, they met there 20 minutes before the parade. The flies, the flights were flying in the truck the whole time. They, they lined up and everyone was there and then they went and did the parade. So saying that it happened so fast is kind of ingenuous because they were there for 20 minutes lined up and before the parade. So can't exactly say that there's honesty being there. As far as the yearbook, oh, we, we didn't know that this, uh, that the school had a redneck class in the yearbook. So that, that snuck through too. Okay. So everything's sneaking through and nobody knows what's going on prior. Um, and there's no knowledge of anything, even though there is. And my, my, I mean, the yearbook has had most likely to succeed, biggest redneck, biggest, you know, whatever, nicest car. It's a, it's actually a category in your school's yearbook and it's been that way. So to say you didn't know it was there is kind of ingenuous. Um, it, it almost seems like someone's got a problem telling the truth here. Um, now, as much as I'm on his side and I'm happy that he, you know, we, we were able to find the middle ground, I'm not really happy with the fact that someone's not willing to stand up for what they believe, which is the whole point of the flag. I'm willing to stand up. But if someone meets me halfway, I'd really like them to stand up beside me and say, yeah, this is something we decided. And, 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 you know, sometimes we make things happen, like this whole BOM thing. Has, it, it took place after all these decisions that me and Mr. Goodman made. So I don't hold him against, anything against him. I just wish that he'd, he'd own it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. We're, we're beyond the, the time limit.
I understand.
I, I appreciate your comments and, um, I'll ask Mr. Goodman to follow up with you, okay?
Um, I, I am the only person here. Is it possible I could comment real quickly on the middle school? Does anyone have an objection to that?
No, we.
Oh, unrelated. It's just on the boiler.
I, I would ask Mr. Goodman to follow up with you. Um, because we are beyond the, the time on the public comment, please.
So one, one comment and that's it? There's no time to comment on the, the boiler or this poll, this first line that we just heard about? Or, you know, the this poll, this first line that we just heard about? Or, you know, there's no time? A lot of, does anybody have an objection to this? Can I, can I, Mr. Cook, or is anybody, can anybody give me sixty seconds to comment on some of this that's going on in the middle school?
Please limit it to sixty seconds, Mr. Christie.
You give me sixty seconds?
Please.
Okay. This tu- this tunnel that, this tunnel that all this pipe's in and they're flooding, is this inspected by anyone? Um, is there a stationary operator that, that deals with the boiler? Because if this thing had a leak and there was a stationary operator, he'd been able to pick up these, see the pressures being spiking or dropping on the gauge. He should be able to pick up this, this uh, hot water leak very easily. Um, second, you, you have a maintenance guy, but he can't cap a pipe. Um, you know, maybe your maintenance guy might be able to have a plumber's license or an electrician's license or maybe have some kind of mechanical ability. Um, and I'd like to know, what's Mr. Kujak's ability? Um, what's his expertise in maintenance or transportation or, does he have any certifications? You're paying all this money to a maintenance guy that doesn't seem to have any ability to do maintenance?
Mr. Brad, I think we're gonna have to end the public comment session there. Um, we'll have Mr. Goodman follow up with you.
Okay, sure. I'll zoom out. Thank you. I'll listen.
Okay, next up, we're on to the correspondence. Um, we had item A, which was the Trune School Law Notes. Any uh, comments regarding that correspondence from the board?
Actually, I just, I was, I was interested when I saw the sections.
Hey Dave, I was interested when I saw the section on bus leases. And I don't know if we had a chance to look through to make sure that we are not uh, taking tax credit for our leases when the capital asset of the bank and the lending company. Not sure if we had a chance to look through that yet.
Mr., it's, it's Mr. Cook. Um, I, I believe we addressed that, I think we talked about this last year excited. I think Trune recycled some of their stuff because I think we talked about this at a meeting last year. I asked the same question. It's a bus lease purchase, which I don't believe that any of ours are lease purchased. So I don't think it's, I don't think it actually impacts us.
That is correct. Um, the leases are the same as that we've done in the past and they are. We are in, in good shape with these.
Thanks, Marty and Brad.
Great. Any other comments on the law notes?
Just one, this, this may be, it may, it may be a similar um, conversation, but the installation of temporary door locking devices, it's towards the bottom of their notes, I think it's the last thing. It says now permitted. Um, but wouldn't that be, um, would that be different than what we have currently in our classrooms?
The, this one is the um, the slide locks that they've been to approve. Um, where you put either the, like the hole in the concrete floor, the student or a teacher can step on the slide lock and they have the, the different ones that now slide over um, like the actual hinge.
Got it.
That's what we're using currently.
Okay. Is that something we're looking at? I don't think we've talked about it before, at least not once since I've been on.
We have not uh, discussed bringing that to something we're doing. No, we have not.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else from the board on that? All right, next up, we had um, under correspondence, item B, Robin Meldrum, Special Ed Director letter. So she, we understand she's moving on to another position, um, but uh, already working with uh, transitioning um, for replacement in there. So um.
Yes, Robin uh, has become a full-time coordinator of, of the REESA. So they're the ones now that kind of oversee all the special ed programs in the county. And because their role has changed, they need to add to her position and made that full-time. She was doing that the other half-time with uh, um. James News is her replacement. He started working with her actually last year with him, with a lot of our staff, uh, introduced to some of the different students that we were working with. Um, he, they take over next Monday officially. Um, he's gonna do a great job and Robin's here to support him through December. So it should be a great transition.
Thank you. Anything else on correspondence for the board? All right. Um, we have nothing under old business this evening. Um, new business, uh, we'll start with item A, which is the yearbook discussion. And um, I believe Mr. Krappa spoke of a, a procedure that was put in place, as well as uh, we had linked our policy fifty-seven twenty-two and um, wanted to have a discussion with the board, have the board here on um, that procedure that Mr. Krappa has worked on drafting, as well as if there's anything needed to change in our policy fifty-seven twenty-two. So I will open that up to the board for discussion.
Mr. Ryan, can I throw a little bit out there, just a little background on there really quick just about the, the procedure you're looking at? Please. Um, just, uh, you know, the yearbook has advisors that we do, the junior high and high school has several yearbooks. Junior high school yearbook typically has been run by uh, Mrs. Wazinski uh, in the, in the main office. Her and I kind of collaborate, I guess. You could stay on that and review things and get that thing rolling. High school yearbook always has had an advisor to stage you, uh, what I believe is a Schedule C position. Uh, so the, the advisor have had the uh, final say in, in most of the uh, you know, what, what's been going on. So we kind of, what happened this year, we kind of looked at the proceedings. I mean, we need another set of eyes out there because things happen. Um, and so what we decided to come up with was a little bit of a procedure kind of similar to what we use in junior high. Uh, our yearbook, our junior, our high school advisor was, was on board with actually going through the points you see there. But basically, we're looking at having eyes out of school throughout the year through different deadlines. The difference between the yearbook and the high school and junior high is, junior high has uh, you approve the, the cover and then you approve the pictures. High school has a series of, of deadlines throughout the year. So we're looking to at each deadline, pull together as a team, put some eyes on it, see how things are going. Uh, so again, the final deadline, at the end you'll see there, uh, the advisor will, you know, be in the yearbook with administrator, my fellow support with, uh, before submitting for final printing to jobs, whoever the company is that has it, and then we go from there. So just a way to kind of put more eyeballs on the thing. Um, you know, to make sure that we, we are, we are doing right by our students and by ourselves, the district, you know, the image there. So um, we're gonna read through there a little bit and kind of take a look, I guess, uh, is what I, we, we wanted to bring that for you. So.
Thank you for that. Uh, any comments, uh, clarification from the board regarding the procedure?
David, I do have a question about the yearbook. Um, so in a communication, uh, in a, in a communication sense, uh, I think on Friday, July tenth, I think it may be. Um, it was said that um, Mr. Goodman contacted Jostens and they were very apologetic. I, I guess I just want, I guess I just, my question would be what, what, isn't it our responsibility um, to look at what's in the yearbook and decide that that's what we want in our yearbook? That wouldn't be Jostens' responsibility. So I, I guess I'm not sure. What was Jostens apologizing for?
Jostens, though, they, they have a group of employees that actually look through yearbooks as well. Um, so they'll scan pictures to see if they've missed anything, that we've missed anything. Um, so he, he just was apologetic that that picture was, it would get through, wasn't something they caught either. Um, so again, just the fact that they do have people that overlook it as well. Uh, we've been working with them for a while. Um, the rep that comes out, um, is a very good guy and we had a good conversation about it and yeah. So that's, that's what he was apologizing for, that they didn't catch it either.
Okay.
This is Audrey. I just have one comment. Um, the policy, the procedure, I guess, with the process in place, I think one of the things that might be missing is as people are reviewing and auditing the pages, is what they should be looking for. Uh, I think everyone would have to understand what the policy is, but everyone may have a different idea of what they um, not makes a cut or makes a cut. So maybe some more specifics on what you're looking for is that it's through the different sets of eyes before it leaves the district.
Any other comments from the board regarding the procedure? Right, uh, you know, looking at our policy fifty-seven twenty-two also, um, you know, it covers beyond the yearbook. It covers, um, you know, really any publication, um, you know, going out, you know, representing the school district. So um, you know, I would think that, you know, anything published, you know, we should follow similar, um, you know, checks and double checks, um, on material going out. So that would just be my comment here. I don't know what, um. Yeah, it's a great um, procedure that you've drafted here um, so far, um, covering the yearbook. But, you know, we want to make sure, I think, if, you know, you represent the school district that, you know, anything that's, that's being published and falling within that fifty-seven twenty-two, um, you know, follows similar, um, scrutiny. So I, I don't personally believe that there's any clarification required to, or changes to be made to fifty-seven twenty-two, but I wanted to open that up to the board to see if um, they felt there was any um, revisions that we needed to make to that policy.
I would agree with you Dave. I think it's fine as it seems.
Okay. Is there any other discussion by the board regarding the yearbook on policy fifty-seven twenty-two and the procedure? All right. Thank you. Um, we will move on to item B, which is uh, resolution eradicate racism. Um, and I believe we got Mr. Watkins online also. So uh, maybe Mr. Goodman, if you can um, discuss this briefly and then uh, Mr. Watkins, if you would like to speak to it at all and then um, and we can move on um, to discuss.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
That's gonna be a, uh, before they come in.
Watkins had reached out to me probably about a month ago, maybe a little over a month ago to talk about uh, some resolutions that he was trying to get all the county schools to um, you know, adopt as part of their policies and procedures. Um, we've met at the county, discussed it with the SUCs meeting. It has been adopted by Mary Ford and Court here on and is on the agenda for the other board meeting. And I believe uh, REESA is also taking it to their board meeting for adoption. Um, Kevin and I had a couple of conversations uh, just to go over it and then talk through it. So uh, Kevin, if you would, you wanna give a little background and introduce a little more than I have?
Hello, can you hear me okay, Brad?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Hi, my name is Kevin Watkins. I am the president of the Bureau of Branch in the HCP, which in offices all of Central County. It's just uh, named Port Huron Branch, but it's all Central County in HCP. And I uh, also, just for history, you know, I, I'm a lost township resident. So I have to pay uh, uh, I, I vote for all of your uh, things that for, for the school district and support the school district. I also was on a, on the school, um, as a trustee and uh, secretary of the school board for two, from two thousand and one to two thousand and five. So I very much support the district. And because of that, um, in Port Huron, you know, this, this started with uh, the recent uh, occurrences and you can sure y'all heard, heard uh, the, the, the police, police brutality against uh, you know, Americans and black Americans mostly, and the marches and the protest marches that they followed in answer that. Uh, we had a protest march supporting on a branch with uh, with the Center for Black Lives Matter and uh, uh, a uh, group called SCORE, which is a, which is a grassroots organization. Uh, we put on, put on the march. And then since then, uh, the Port, I, I addressed the Port Huron City Council. The city council adopted resolutions to uh, denounce racism. And then we, we talked, it started with the, the Port Huron Schools District and carried over to Mary Ford School District. The top resolution to eradicate racism and uh, create a more equitable and inclusive school for our children. And that's what you're gonna be hopefully adopting tonight. This is one, because we don't know, you know, that we got to be ruled that, you know, this racism has been with us since uh, back to sixteen nineteen, uh, African, Black Americans. We, we know there. We know the movement forward, we make great progress and that uh, Peter made progress. And those issues, there's been issues down uh, Central County and throughout the state, throughout the country. You know, it's, it's important that uh, you know, every municipality and every school district, dealing with our children, to make a very bold and powerful statement that we uh, we're against institutional systemic racism, especially our school district that's staying here. You want to adopt this resolution to eradicate racism and know that. You um, you promote the equity or truthfulness of all, all these students. So I was wanting to come tonight and uh, uh, my support and appreciate and reach out my appreciation, Brad Goodman. You're a super known brat for me a long time. You guys are, Brad here, uh, as you're here, we call him me. He, he, I remember he hired him in a lousy school, his first job and he interviewed. And uh, we're so, so happy to have him. I, I'm very, I was kind of bummed out, but I, I was in the, in, in a virtual meeting with the Port Huron Schools earlier. So I came into your meeting late, so I'm unable to um, register for the first participant. I just quickly uh, wanna say that, that situation you've had with the federal flag, we had those issues in the past and, and the, the issue you had with your, I want to say that Brad could be uh, go back in a very professional, very well, well, a way that you should be very proud of, of being, still, as a supporter of these schools. That need to be said. So obviously, I thank you for, for attending tonight. And you are uh, probably the first smallest school district. I remember our district has best uh, K twelve, it's twelve hundred students. I'm not sure what you are right now, but you are setting the example for K pack, for Emmett, uh, for Yale with some of the smallest school districts. Uh, though I stated that uh, certainly, very specific step of the board with this. And our emphasis is doing that now and we're gonna, you gotta spread out through the county. So again, thank you very much for uh, taking this into consideration and uh, I'm hoping this is adopted tonight.
Great, thank you. Mr. Watkins, um, all right, it's at this point that we'll look for a motion and then we can um, further discuss the resolution as a part?
Dave, this is Audrey. I will make um, motion to approve the resolution to eradicate racism as presented.
This is Amanda Bobstein, support.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mrs. Bobstein to approve the resolution to eradicate racism as presented. Um, discussion by the board regarding this resolution.
Um, board members, this is Susan. I do have, um, I think, I want to start off by saying that this resolution can be a truly teachable moment for us as a board, uh, and those who look to us for direction. I would suggest, though, that on paragraph four, by selecting one ethnic group, we're excluding many others who are members of our school, our community and our nation. Hispanics, Native Americans, Asians, Middle Easterners, uh, and other multicultural groups. This tends to lend itself or could lend itself to divisiveness. My thought was that on paragraph four, whereas we wish to end violence and injustices, unequivocally declare that an injustice to one is an injustice to all.
Um, I also was going to address that same paragraph. Um, I'm going to mention that rather than, um, that I also agree, um, with Mrs. Durst and that, um, we have many ethnicities that, um, that we have even been in our, you know, in any area, um, in that. And so it, it would, it is just, um, bringing to mind just the, the, the people which are wonderful people. But I wonder if instead of saying that, if it should say, say unequivocally, even if we declare that all lives matter.
That an injustice to one is an injustice.
I was, I've been reading, um, even in our findings and, and, and you go to just before the, um, it's the signature where it will be that, because I, that's I'm carrying that, is it says that any and all acts of racism disrespect violence and equitable treatment of any person.
Work with the district.
And so right there, we're including all people. And so I just want to, rather than just choose one race.
I also agree that we should, um, we should open it to, to all because this is something that, that, um, many different, discrimination can, can lead to, um, ethnic groups. Thank you.
And this is McHugh?
This is Amanda Bobstein. Um, oh, sorry, go ahead, Dave. Okay.
Go ahead.
I just feel like as a district, we made, we need to make a really strong and clear statement against racism. And, uh, my only question, Brad, has any legal looked over this or has any guidance been given from Neola at all?
No, I have not taken it from, uh, I have not taken it to either through nor, um, Jean. This is the, um, resolution that was adopted by Port Huron, so we use theirs as a template.
Okay. So my only thing with this whole thing is, um, it's kind of like that there's no vetting process. And I kind of feel like it'd be like, we would need to kind of vet it a little bit and make sure that legal takes a look at it because there are some statements in there. Personally, I would have liked to see a little bit more clearer, like what we're committing, what we're saying that we're going to do so that we follow through it. Like what is our clear commitment and not so vague? Um, are we going to try to get more diversity of staff? Are we trying to get implicit bias training? Like what exactly are we as a district saying that we want to commit to? Because I want to follow through on that. Whatever we say we're going to do, I want to follow through on that. And then the only thing that I seen where it's the second to last paragraph, it says, whereas we believe that in partnership with the district, we must review current and proposed state budgets, uh, standards, policy, legislation, policy guidance. So are we saying that, are we, are we partnering up with the NAACP exactly? Like who are we partnering with? And what does that partnership mean for us? Like are, how are we going over who's deciding proposed state budgets, standards, policy? Are we getting solicited advice? What exactly does that mean? My only thing is like, say, say something a lawsuit would have ever happened for some reason. The first thing a lawyer is going to do is first look at our policies, look at our documents. We're stating that we're going to do this, this, this and this. And that if we don't follow through on that, we're kind of opening ourselves up. So I just would like to see more of a clear commitment from our district of what we want to do. I just think that this is a really important, um, thing that we need to tackle. I feel like it needs more conversation, time and kind of thought to say exactly what we want to say. That's all.
Hey Brad, can I ask anything? Dave, is it okay? Um, well, at this point, we're, we're in the, the board discussion.
Mr. Ryan, it's Martin Cook. Mr. Mr. Ryan, it's Martin Cook. May I have the floor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I, I think there was a question just asked and, and so I, I guess I would like the answer to, who are we partnering with, Mr. Goodman, um, in the, in the sentence that, um, my esteemed colleague just read?
This is a board, this would be a board, the board, on that. So the board is, uh, going to work with Memphis Community Schools to review. So that, you know, you're working with everybody on staff or anybody else that we want to bring into the conversation or rely on?
Okay. Point of clarification, please, Mr. Goodman. On July tenth, twenty twenty, you, you introduced this resolution and I'll quote your, uh, your email, "With Kevin's help, I have created a draft of a resolution for the BOE's consideration at this month's meeting." Is that a true statement? Did you create this?
No, I, Mr. Watkins reached out to me and provided an example from Port Huron Schools. So I took that resolution and then put it for, with the Memphis, um, school part of it. And then Mr. Watkins and I had a conversation regarding that, whether or not there needed to be any changes or not.
And were there any changes made to the resolution passed by the Port Huron Area School System?
Nothing besides main changes, no.
Okay. So you did not create this. This is Port Huron's resolution. So who is this authored by? Mr. Goodman?
Who is it authored by? Um, Port Huron Schools is where I got it from. I do not know who wrote it for them.
I can help answer your question, Goodman.
Uh, I have the floor, sir. I'm sorry. Um, so when you say you've created a draft of a resolution, would that not infer you've created the document?
Well, I guess I did create it for Memphis Community Schools. Did we get it from a different district? You're absolutely correct. I did not write this from scratch.
So if a student creates a report, but actually they just plagiarize someone else's work, is that acceptable?
Um, I would agree with the points that, um, Ms. Durst brought up first. Um, this is a nonpartisan office and I'm not comfortable, uh, relating to or swearing allegiance to in any way, shape or form a partisan group. Um, so I would ask that, uh, that, um, adjustment to the section that Ms. Durst brought up would be made. Um, I, I do, I would like to understand what are, uh, what we're committing to from a curriculum standpoint? What does our curriculum now look like regarding race, racism, um, in any form? Um, I would tell you personally, um, my father has a, my late father, uh, has a criminal record in the state of Alabama for marching, uh, back in the sixties, um, for racial justice. And, uh, that's the home that's brought up in. Um, I, I personally have no tolerance for racism of any kind against anyone. But I want to be really careful that we understand clearly what we're committing to. Uh, we're holding ourselves accountable for should we, um, should we sign off on and adopt this resolution. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of power towards state budget. So I'm a little concerned with a couple of those. This was authored by someone in the Port Huron School District, who I believe, um, may have a little more pull with the, uh, state than our small school district. I believe, uh, I believe it's, uh, Tracy and Lori are the actual authors of this work. Um, I would just like to understand what our board is, um, is, um, it's committing to. That's it, uh, Mr. President, for now?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any other questions, comments from others on the board?
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, Mr. Watkins, this is at a, at a board discussion level at this point.
Well, I, I put it on the agenda to, to, to address the resolution. This is not part of the, all participation structure, need to interact, ask some points that were brought up that I can answer. And I think you're asking, you're kind of beating up on, on Mr. Goodman here, um, because he's not going to answer, but I can ask.
Mr. President, I have to take all this meeting. Excuse me. Um, is there any other comments, questions by board members?
Uh, this is Chris. I, I do find that the, the one statement where we will partner with the districts and in the budget is, um, it, it looks like one of the commitments that we are signing up to, we need to understand more. The other statements as I read, that we believe, no qualms, and violence and justice. But I do think we do need clarity on when it says the partnership or legislation to ensure and promote. I'm, I'm not sure how we can actually set up to ensure and what that, what that task is. We can do it within our own and we can promote with, promote it without. And I don't think any board member here would not.
Thank you, Mr. Parry. Any other questions, comments by the board? We do have a motion on the floor. Um, something the board could consider, um, as a discussion point is that we have a workshop in the future, um, to work through this resolution and detail and, um, consult with, I think, legal in advance. And, um, hopefully put together some, um, guidelines. Um, I think Mr. Cook mentioned, you know, curriculum, you know, what, you know, what things we could commit to make sure that, um, you know, everything in the resolution is, is addressed, that is, is being captured in there. Um, you know, we could bring in stakeholders as well for that workshop to, to work through this resolution. Is there any other, um, comments by the board? So I think it's clear that, uh, the board, um, is interested in, in working through this, but, um, not, um, completely in the current form, but we will take it to a vote and, um, you know, we can also recommend other action if needed. So let's take a roll call vote on the resolution as presented.
Mr. Ryan?
Uh, no, not as presented.
Mr. Parry?
No.
Mrs. McHugh?
No, not as presented.
Mr. Cook?
No, not as presented.
Mrs. O'Connor?
No.
Mrs. Bobstein?
No.
Mrs. Durst?
Not as presented.
Okay. So we have a unanimous, no vote. So the motion for the resolution, uh, fails. I would like to
Mr. President?
Make a motion to have a workshop with the board, um, to develop this resolution to eradicate racism and create a more equitable and inclusive school for all children, um, within the next two months. Any further discussion by the board?
No, I agree. I think our workshop, I think our workshop can put more meat on it and hold ourselves to higher standards and be, be clear on some actions we're going to do forward.
I agree with Chris. I think, I think we really need a clear commitment of what we are going to do. And I think we need to put some thought into it and really make a clear, strong statement of what we are going to do to help with this process.
Ms. O'Connor, I believe you had a question regarding the time, the venue.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what you said. You cut out a little bit. Did you say within the next two months?
Yes, within the next two months. Um, we can, we can schedule a meeting or, or schedule it at a, at a future meeting.
Okay. The only other thing too, that I think we should consider from a workshop perspective is, is potentially voices outside of the school board that may be able to contribute to what it means to create a more equitable, inclusive school. Whether that's Mr. Watkins or, um, you know, a group of individuals that may provide feedback outside of our experiences.
Any further discussion by the board?
Uh, this is Susan again. I agree with, um, Mrs. O'Connor and Mrs. Bobstein on both points.
Okay. I do have a motion on the floor. Didn't I catch who supported that motion? Couldn't you restate?
That was Chris.
Okay. Do we want to set a follow-up date, um, within this discussion?
This is Amanda. I would like to see a follow-up date scheduled if we can right now.
Bye, Chris. Can we get a special board meeting in to cover the topic? We may have extended voices to get people heard.
Okay. Um, Dave, your motion
Okay.
Dave, your motion stated in the next two months, so unless you grant your motion, should we vote on the motion and then set the date?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. McQ. Is there any other further discussion by the board? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to have a workshop by the board in the next two months to work towards this resolution to eradicate racism and create a more equitable and inclusive schools for all children. Motion by myself, supported by Mr. Parry. We'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Yeah.
Mrs. McQ?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, seven to seven. Motion carry. Would you like to set a date at this point? Do I have any suggestions from the board?
Mr. President, I had mentioned in Friday finals that we will need a special board meeting to approve our preparedness plan. I was looking at the week of August and I don't know if any of those dates work.
I'll be unavailable. I'll be in the U P all that week. This is Mr. Cook.
Mr. Goodney, when was the resolution? Did you have that material together in the prior week?
Yeah, I'm just looking at how, um, it's a possibility of August 6th is an option.
This is Audrey.
This is Amanda. It works for me also.
This is Karen. It works for me.
Susan, it works for me.
Marty, I'm good. This is Chris. This is Chris. I'll be on the road, but I will be able to remotely check in and it'll work.
Okay. Is there any, so while we're discussing this, is there any recommendations of, of course, and we can invite Mr. Watkins to the workshop, is there any other stakeholders the board has in mind that we could invite in for this discussion? Brad, can you suggest, or Mr. Karafa, can you suggest any student organizations? Gain their input as well?
We could talk to Mrs. Phillips. She's the head of the student council and see if she has some students that would be interested in joining us.
Yeah, we can do Mrs. Phillips. I was thinking that I think we've got a junior high also has, oh, she runs the whole crew. It's a possibly honor society, maybe junior high.
Yeah, I would love to have some student personnel.
Anybody from, how about from counseling from RISA? Brad?
Yes, I will invite Jean.
Thanks. Mr. Watkins, are you available that evening?
August 6th. What date was that?
Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
You said August 6th?
August 6th.
Yes.
Thank you.
What time?
Uh, 7:00 P. M.
Is it going to be remote?
Well, I think we're going to have a discussion on that later in this meeting. So we will have to get back with you on that.
Okay, I hope it's live meeting. But something that's important, I like to look you in the eye.
Understand. All right, so we'll set that next meeting time at August 6th at 7:00 P. M. Done. Any other, any other topics on this discussion of setting the meeting from the board? All right, thank you. Next up, we have the administrative contracts.
Yes, I provided the contracts for administration and administrative assistance, central office staff. They are in the board folder there. There's date changes on a majority of them. We did have two, three-year contracts that automatically renewed that will have the 2% built in over the next three years. The other ones, we did not have any financials at this time. Adam and I both discussed it and not having a good handle on what the financials will be for 2021 yet. We thought it'd be a good idea to wait. It's something that we can reopen these contracts once we have financials from the state letting us know foundation. We'd have a student count at that time as well. I put everything in there for there. There's a few language changes, timeline changes for the automatic renewal and the non-renewals to align more closely with the revised school code. Other than that, it was date changes to align for the 2021 school year.
Okay, I'm a little confused by your statement there. Are you saying that these contracts are prepared to the point where you would recommend them to the board or is there further work to do on them?
No, these are prepared to present to the board for approval. With approving the contract, we do have the ability to reopen for the financials at a later time in the year. That way, if we have any indications from the state of our foundation allowance, we could do something in the fall or it probably wouldn't be till November that we could look at financials if we wanted to reopen those to discuss those at that time.
Mr. President, Martin Cook, may I have the floor?
Yes.
Thank you, Cook, for the floor. Thank you, sir. Mr. Goodney, have any changes other than dates been called out in these contracts? Any language changes? Have they been called out?
Yes, the language changes, we're changing from the 90-day notice to the April 15th notice to align them with the principal contracts.
No. I'm sorry, my question was, are they called out? So when you edit a word document, you can call out a change so that we can see the changes. I guess, I don't see any changes that are notated on these. I guess my challenge is at 4 o'clock when I left my office, in order to be home for this meeting, these were not uploaded. And I were being asked to approve 11 contracts that there's, unless somebody happened to be sitting at their desk, no one in their right mind could have read all 11 of these already. And personally, I don't feel comfortable approving a contract that I haven't read. And I guess I'm a little concerned about why at such a late hour are we getting this information? Why was this, it should have been provided at a minimum on Friday with the rest of the documents. So I'm just trying to understand, I try to understand why we've had almost no time to read 11 contracts. I'm uncomfortable with voting for any of these contracts tonight because I haven't had a chance to read them. I speak for myself.
And these contracts can be tabled. I sent them to the negotiation team to review last week. There's some input provided to them and that's why they were bought tonight. They can be tabled until the August meeting.
Any other comments by the board on the contracts or questions?
This is Amanda Bobstein. Same thing with Marty, like the contracts aren't available to review. So if we could table that to August, just so we have time to look over them, that would be great.
Mr. President, this is Karen McQ. On the half of the 2% build-in, is the re opener, like in case the district comes into like a huge financial crisis, is the re opener also so that we can look at those, you know, rather than just continue to give the 2% we possibly, just like with the M E A and that and with the other units, yeah, you haven't asked me in that, we have reopeners built in so that we might have to go in and make cuts. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I know there was, I'm sorry, is there any other, anything else, Mrs. McQ?
No, no, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions by the board on the administrative contracts? Just one question or maybe a recommendation for clarification from my side is that, I know there was some discussion whether the automatic renew, in particular in the principal contracts, it's automatic renewal implies the, you know, the gradual stepped increase or not. So I think we should have clarification in there whether, if it automatically renews, if a percentage increase is assumed at that point or if it would be renewing at the, you know, the third, the final year rate or something. I think we should consider having that language clarified.
I will do so.
And then, Amanda, you had mentioned, you know, discussing it in the August meeting and I think others mentioned that as well. Granted, the topics that we have already set for August 6th is the board, considering this as a topic for the meeting on the 24th? Or trying to do this?
Oh, sorry. This is Amanda. I would say probably the 24th unless there's a time restraint that we're looking at. But Brett, I also have a question. Does legal take a look at the contracts or anything like that? So we just don't get in the same situation we did with the unexpected raises?
Yes, I have contacted Jean and discussed the contracts. I can run them by her with the changes that we may make here in the next couple of weeks.
Any other further discussion from the board on administrative contracts? Okay, we'll look at putting that on the August 24th agenda then. Mr. Goodney, if you can get us, you know, the contracts in final form at least a week prior to that, then the board can be prepared for detailed discussions there.
Absolutely.
All right, next up we have from the amended items. We had added the varsity assistant coaches. This has come up the last couple of meetings and Mr. Okie put together a summary, I think, of his recommendations on that and financial impact to the school district. So I would like to open that up to the floor, to the board for discussion on that topic. It's Mr. Okie. Mr. Okie, if you're still with us, maybe you can take a few minutes and process board discussion with,
Yes, can you hear me? Mr. Ryan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, hello, everybody. Yes, I mean, obviously you have my recommendation there, my feelings. I wanted to go through each sport, just give indications. At the beginning of each sport, you know, roughly what we've been averaging per athlete on each team and then the maximum amount. So if you see like with the first one with baseball slash softball, you see the number 12, that's pretty much what we've been averaging, 12, 13 kids. But the maximum that a varsity team can have for, say, for to go into the state tournament is 15. So you would always have a maximum of 15. And I, you know, that's why I went down, gave little minor descriptions on each individual team or some of the things. Now, you know, we just spent a ton of money on a weight room. We're really excited about that, you know, with the grants that we got. You know, so for one of the things and one of my goals for this year is to, you know, teach coaches, work with coaches and teaching them more about how to facilitate a weight room during practice as well as after practice. So we can minimize the amount of time that kids are away from home so they can spend time now with their families, but study to help continue to improve in our eligibility policy that we're doing so well and to utilize it. And you can't do that with most of our facility, you know, whether it's baseball, softball, there's such a great distance. You know, so to have an assistant, a paid assistant coach, right now we're relying on volunteer assistant coaches in every program except for football and track. So every other program, we're relying on, hopefully, somebody can volunteer their time, which is fantastic and we accept that and we look to continue to accept it. But to compete at the level that we feel we need to compete, to give our athletes the best opportunity to perform, to give our athletes the best opportunity to become better, to give our athletes the best opportunity to get a full workout in, get the fundamentals, get the illustrations of their particular sport and to get work in condition and then to get them home to keep their studies up, I feel it is a necessity that we have a paid assistant coaches. We have schedule C assistant coaches in almost every program except for at this time, boys and girls soccer and, I apologize, boys and girls soccer. And well, obviously, and then I'm looking to the district across country. So boys and girls soccer right now do not have schedule C opportunities to have an assistant coach. If you look at the very last page where I have it itemized, you will see that that's where there's your all assistant coaches, step one, what their payments would be. Now, when you get down to the boys and girls soccer, you know, you see where I, the only sport I think I could kind of compare it to, I mean, you know, I didn't want to compare it to football because of, you know, the physicality, not saying that's the physicality, not saying that soccer's not physical, but, you know, with the constant hitting and stuff like that and the necessity of having two, three, four coaches out there. I compared it to track. At track, step one is the amount that you see in the ledger there for a step one. That's if we were to create a Schedule C step one for Boys and Girls Soccer individually, that is the amount that it would be for a step one. And then when you get below, down to the cross country, you know, cross country's been a sport that we've had since 2011. We have the same coach since 2011. That coach has been able to lead, if you look in the notes there, Mr. Ryan and the school board, you know, we've had five or six different teams and/or individuals that have qualified for state. So that's great Memphis recognition. And I, first and foremost, you know, recommend that we pay our cross country head coach position and a Schedule C like we do with all the other varsity sports that have been in existence for two to three years. So that is my rationale with paying cross country. If we were to pay our cross country head coach, the amount to the right, which is a step one, minimal of $3,057, then that would take that bottom first number of totals to just over $15,000. So an additional $3,000 is a step one. And normally we try to move up steps, and that's something that I think we can talk to her about. But I'm just trying to clarify that boy, you know, all the other sports have right now a Schedule C assistant coach. Those are coaches that we can then, hey, you know, you're going to be at a specific time, you know, not half of practice, not, maybe never at a practice, maybe, you know, as a volunteer assistant, we require them to get, get the same thing that a coach has to get, which is a $75, $75 to get their fingerprints, you know, to do a background check. We can make them do that as well. We're also making these volunteer assistant coaches, you know, what we're doing with them, especially in the baseball, the softball, the basketballs, sports, we're making them take the tests so that they're able to coach at the state level for tournaments as a volunteer assistant coach. So to professionalize our program, to better instruct, better supervise, and work with our kids, I highly recommend that we get, we have paid assistant coaches, to become compatible with and comparable to many schools in our league that we play who have paid assistant coaches. They have paid assistant coaches. We do not. So that is my enforcement with that. What I did, kind of give you an idea, if you look to the right, what some of the schools are doing, and I mentioned this to you a few months ago, is that some of the schools are looking at their paid assistant coaches and saying, well, what we're going to do, and even though we're giving opportunity to everybody, we're going to pay them $100 per athlete at the varsity level. And so what I did was, there's an estimate and then there's a max. The estimate, I went down, and on every single one of those teams, I went down, which is the estimate of how many kids are playing at the varsity level to maximize their, you know, maximize, maximize their roster. Now, this past spring, even though we did not play, I can tell you that baseball has been averaging in the, in the first three years, right around 13 players. But this year, I think he was looking at having a 15 persons, 15 person. So if we estimate that on an average of 12 to 13, we're going to have, you know, 12 or 13 athletes, then that assistant coach would get paid 12, 13, you know, $1,000, $100 per student with a maximum of 15. If the head coach wants to have 17 kids during the school year, I mean, during the playing season, well, we're going to be maxed out at 15 because they can only dress 15 kids for a state tournament on baseball and softball. If you go to the next, Girls and Boys Basketball, you know, we estimated, now, Girls Basketball, we have not had a JV, so we've had more kids. So this past year, Girls Basketball had 11 or 12 girls, I think it was, to start off, I think it was 12 to start off. And, you know, through injuries and stuff like that, they decreased and depleted a little bit. But at that time, you know, it goes back to, we had no JV program. I've got a head coach, and if something were to happen to that coach and he cannot make it, who coaches that team? Well, you know, I don't know. So I don't want to have, I don't know, in the best interest of our kids. I want to be able to supplement somebody, you are that assistant coach to the varsity program. In Boys Basketball, we had 12 kids on varsity this past year, and, you know, I think that's about an average amount, 12 to 13, that most, you know, should carry at the varsity level. But again, they can only maximize at 15. But let's go back. We have a volunteer assistant who's been here for three years, and, you know, there was a situation where I was in coaching, and I'm getting questioned, maybe we should take people out of the stands to coach. That is not acceptable, is not professional, and it should not even be a question. The fact of the matter is, our programs and our best interest of our kids, I believe there should be a paid assistant. Boom, that's the question. Do we bring somebody up if we have a JV program? How is that fair to that JV coach? And how is that fair to those kids when 99% of the time JV and varsity teams do not coach at the, practice at the same time? There are some sports, let's be honest, like volleyball, that could. But when you have coaching schedules, whether it's family, work, whatever, you know, not everybody's on the same page. We do not have one school official, other than myself, in the Boys Basketball program from seventh grade up. We do not have one school official, meaning teacher, that can coach in the Girls Program. We do not have a school employee that coaches baseball. We have a school employee that coaches softball. We did have a school employee that coached JV softball, but we weren't looking at having a JV softball this team this past year. We were looking to have JV Boys Baseball, and so that coach was going to switch over, and he is a school official. But 90% of our coaches don't even work here. And so we're trying to, you know, mix match, you know, get practice times, you know, set schedules, and we're trying to do it at the work schedules where a majority of our coaches do not work in our school district. And, you know, one thing I get questioned all the time is, well, what kind of these other schools can do that? Well, because 90% of their coaches work in the school. Ours do not. So I am trying to do this so I can have professionalism, I can have structure, I can have development, and I can have, you know, supervision, whether it's transportation, whether it's at, you know, weight room and basketball court, weight room and wrestling mat, weight room and baseball, weight room and softball, weight room and cheerleading, weight room and volleyball. I can't supervise two spots as myself. I have to hope, I have to hope that a committed volunteer assistant may show up. I may put a whole practice schedule together, and I get a phone call, my volunteer assistant maybe can't make it that day, or he's going to be 40 minutes late, or if it's something we're paying them for, they're expected to be there, or maybe we didn't give this flexibility to hire two volunteer assistants and split their pay like we do in some of the other programs. Soccer, Boys and Girls Soccer won three straight league championships. Our Boys Soccer won a varsity district last year. If our coach can't make it for whatever reason, which would be an emergency only because the man's always there, who coaches that team? I don't like question marks. I'm trying to prevent this from happening for the professionalism, the ultimate security supervision of our student athletes. That is what we're expected to do, and that's what I'm requesting. So I gave you as a board, two opportunities here to look at this. I respectfully request that. If you look at the numbers on the far left, that is the Schedule C amount. If you take the Schedule C amount and add three other Schedule Cs, which would be Boys and Girls, actually, it's four, Boys and Girls Soccer Assistant Coaches, so that's two, maybe the same person, but it's, you know, again, that's two. And then you, I highly recommend and request that we pay our cross country coach who is doing every bit of work that that coach does as a track coach, where they have an assistant and they get paid for a three-year program compared to a cross country program that that same coaches ran without any financial help whatsoever for the last 10 years. The Schedule C first column is what you see there. If you only add a head coach paid for cross country, that would be an additional $3,000 as it shows there, which brings that amount up to the $15,000 that, you know, is there. Or what some schools are doing, and in our financial situation, I understand that, in our climate of where we're at financially, you see the estimate, which is the average, and then you see the maximum. And, you know, I think those are fair right across the board, comparable to the other programs. You know, track has a head coach and a paid assistant. We are, you know, we quickly, if a team doesn't have enough numbers, like the last couple of years, and they're a little low in opportunity to, for kids, and I think it was junior high wrestling, we only had six kids, they all that could become a club. We don't pay the coach, we don't pay transportation. But when he does, when we do have the maximum amount of kids, where's our, where's our support? So we're, you know, we're able to take money, but we're not giving money back to these programs that have worked, you know, as hard as anyone in the district to supervise our kids. So if I sound emphatic, it's because I am. We're, you know, we're putting money in the weight room, we're putting money in the gyms, we're putting money in the baseball and softball fields, we're putting money in the football and soccer fields, you know, we're, we're, we're excelling in almost every single sport. We have a couple of sports that we're working on to get to higher levels, but, you know, we have sports right now, our coaches and our volunteer assistants are giving a lot, as much as and more in some cases, than our athletes. And I think that that's why we feel that we should be paying our volunteer assistants and make them full assistant coaches. But because of the climate financially, I recommend the option where we pay each coach, an assistant coach for each program, that coach will be hired by, you know, that would be recommended by the head coach, and obviously approved by myself with the head coach and the building principal who I work with daily on making sure that they are going to fulfill their responsibilities just like we do as a head coach. And they will assist, we may be able to split it up too, but if you have a maximum of 10 kids, 10, you know, say 10 girls on a Girls Basketball program, or 10 girls on the wrestling program, and they're able to compete as a whole, then know that I believe that we should have a volunteer assistant, or that becomes a paid assistant. And again, to reemphasize the climate of the economical state of Michigan right now, where we're at, I think that in looking at the estimate, the $100 per student definitely supports, can we, something that we can financially afford with our equity fund at this time, and more importantly, is in the best interest of our programs, our kids, our athletes, and of course, our programs as a whole.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Okie. I'll open it to the board at this point for discussion. Any questions, comments?
Mr. President, Martin Cook, I guess my only comment would be, from a funding perspective, it looks like we're going to lose 175, gain 350. You know, we can all hope and pray that that's the case. But obviously, we've got a student count, a potential student count issue that I'm sure we'll talk about here later. But I, I think from a coronavirus, and one of the reasons why, if, if my notes are correct, their business director shared with us is that that $350 is meant to help with COVID response and things that we have to do. And obviously, we've got some, we've got some hardware we have to purchase, we've got additional sanitizing chemicals and things we have to purchase. I, I would look at this, I would look at assistant coaches in these sports as part of our response to COVID-19 and understanding the adult supervision that is available to our head coaches during practice and, and even during game, and understanding that things have changed dramatically, you know, from last year to this year. And we still don't know what's going to happen with athletics. Are they going to get moved? Are they going to get canceled? We just don't know. I, I think we've got to provide some assistance to the head coaches of all sports to make sure that they have, we're talking about taking people's temperature and asking them specific questions around COVID and, and, you know, whatever the next COVID is. I think some of these things are not going to go away even once COVID goes away, COVID-19 goes away. So I, I think for many reasons, it makes sense. We also have, you know, we have lost some coaches over the last few months, and some of those are, are coaches that were expected to leave, some aren't. But in order to build a successful program, you've got to have some bench, bench strength, and this would provide some bench, bench strength for us as well. So, and it's not a lot of money at the end of the day, considering our budget. I would tell you, I would go with a fixed number rather than a per athlete. I think that gets a little, I don't like to go into anything not knowing what I'm paying. That's just me. I, I'd like to know what the bill is before we start. So I'd be in favor of doing it, but I would do it on a, the pay is the pay. Just my opinion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any other comments from the board, questions?
Yeah, I guess I have a question. I know we were talking about the potential increase in student funding when it relates to the exposure we may have to COVID changes that are required. Would that apply to athletics, or does it have to be something that supports every student?
We do not have any clarification on that at this time. We are really pushing the legislators to make that funding available for any use that the school sees fit. But like Adam had stated, they have not come out because it is federal care dollars that we are using for. We have not got clear guidance on what it can be used for at this time. It is a possibility. It would be up to, you know, the auditors and like, to kind of give us some guidance on that.
Okay. And I would agree, I think arrange is unmanageable. The fixed fee, the assistant coaches, it is what it is. I don't think we want to get into all of the fluctuations that may come with student counter changes related to what may or may not happen with what's going on. But yes, I mean, it's a great concept. If it, if it helps us get assistant coaches and coaches that remain and stay to build programs, I think it's great. I just hope it works in these challenging times.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor. Any other member of board like to comment?
Mr. Goodney, in the, in the last contract, did we add in the cross country head coach into the Schedule C positions?
Yes, we did. It was approved at the May meeting. The head coach and not an assistant at that level, but the, also the junior high head coach from both approved for cross country.
Okay. And a budgeting related question. Do we budget for all these and then decide at another point whether, you know, the hire actually takes place? I guess are all these Schedule C positions budgeted already?
Not all of them. The assistant, some of the assistant budget for those. So it would be an increase in some budgeting for that.
So would the, would the contract need to be amended for this then, to add assistant coaches?
To several of the programs, it would if we were, we'd have to take that to NEA for approval. The other ones are already in there, so the ones that are currently in the contract, we can agree to begin paying them again, but that was, that's not a negotiated item, that's just something that the board chose to do back, like I said, when we made some cuts several years back. So that is something the board could approve because those were never removed from the contract, we would just begin hiring for those positions again.
So the, the ones we could not vote on tonight would be the boys and girls soccer assistants and the cross-country assistant, correct?
And I believe competitive cheer, I don't believe that has an assistant in that I would look. It does not look like the cheerleading has an assistant coach in the contract at this time either.
Brad, I don't mean to sound correct, you know, I think if you look, I, there is, unless I read it wrong, sir. Oh, shoot, I don't know. I think it was down around assistant coaches with, it may be wrestling, but I thought I saw one. If I'm not, I apologize, but I thought I saw assistant cheerleading.
There's a JV and freshman cheering, I don't see assistant, but.
Okay.
I just see the JV and the freshman at this time.
Hey, Brad, there's been a discussion at the very beginning, no?
Chris, I believe you're muted.
Is this better?
There you go.
Part of the discussion came up at the beginning that one of our issues is we don't have school personnel as, as staff. We're asking for more, more funding to get assistant coaches in. What are we going to do to, to address the first issue and entice these jobs to the teachers? How are, how are we changing it to encourage them?
I don't, sorry about that. I don't have a good answer for that. You know, our teachers have the first chance at any of these positions that come open each year. We've had some staff on, we don't have a lot of the young staff that's interested in getting into the coaching at this time. You know, that's something we always look for when we're hiring teachers, is to try to find somebody that is interested in doing the extras.
So the, the way the contract is written right now, you know, let's take baseball, for example, the amount there that's for Schedule C is left, both the estimate and max. Would the, would the contract require them that they're paid the Schedule C amount that's in that contract, correct?
That would be my understanding, that any position that's already in the contract, unless we negotiate it differently, would be paid at the steps in there. The NEA, I think, would be very reasonable to work with if we wanted to change some of that, but it'd be something we'd have to take to them and negotiate.
Would anyone would like to make a, a motion regarding this?
David, Marty, a motion that we approve the paid assistant coaches for those Schedule C assistant coach positions that already, that already exist in the negotiated contract, and that we take the other paid assistant coach, coach, um, the NEA for approval.
This is Amanda Bobstein, support.
Can we have a motion by Mr. Cook to approve the assistant coaches per the Schedule C amounts and take the others to the NEA for contract discussions that's supported by Mrs. Bobstein? Any further discussion by the board?
Well, for clear future, is it to take the assistant coaches at the Schedule C amount or the proposed amount that are on the table?
Mr. Cook, can you clarify that motion, please?
It would be at the agreed-upon Schedule C numbers, no variable, taking the variable out of the picture.
No, but right now, he shows 1,500 for the estimate or the max, but the Schedule C amounts would be 1,987 to be higher.
At the Schedule C numbers, I, I, yes, at Schedule C numbers.
I'm just trying to find out which, which positions that equates to then baseball 2,000, 1,987?
Sorry, Mr. Pari, you're, you're still, your audio is out.
David, ask what positions are already in the, in the contract for Schedule C. Currently, assistant coaches in Schedule C would be for wrestling, track, we do, we do football already, basketball. I believe those would be the only ones that are, the other ones would have to be negotiated.
Brad, I'm sorry, did you say cheerleading in that, or?
I do not believe cheer has an assistant at this time. I see the JV cheer and freshmen cheering, I do not see assistant varsity.
So the assistant track, the, the request from the athletic directors for 2,000, but this motion would give them 3,057?
So, so the cross-country coach, looking at an assistant cross-country coach would be, which would be the 2,100. We do, we do have assistant track, but we do not have an assistant cross-country, that would be in addition as well.
Are we still trying to clarify the motion here?
I'm trying to clarify, given the Schedule C amount, I'm just trying to find out what that amount is higher than what the athletic director originally asked for.
Yeah, I guess that's my question is, you know, obviously, these aren't, it's not a lot of numbers to look at, but we've just listened for over 30 minutes, and it's still not clear exactly what we would be approving what's in Schedule C and not in Schedule C. So my thought is maybe clean that up and get it in the August 6th or the next board meeting, so we know specifically what we're looking at and what we need to go to the NEA for approval.
This is Amanda Bobstein. I was a little bit confused on how the, the pay for the Schedule C, how it was formatted. I personally would be more comfortable doing the $100 per athlete, that just seems to make more sense, especially Drake was saying that that is how the other districts are doing it. I feel like that's more feasible and reasonable for our district also. That's my opinion.
With that said, would we have to go back and renegotiate the Schedule C? Because if we pay them different than the Schedule C, are we going to run into an issue?
Yes, we would have to get approval. I, I do not see how you could pay less than what's in the Schedule C without going to the NEA for approval.
Yeah, that's what I thought as well. Yeah, I guess at this point, since we got to have another meeting in a week and a half, I will, I will draw my motion and ask for Brad to, actually, I'll restate, I'll withdraw my original motion, and I will make another motion, I don't know if a motion is necessary, but I'll make one, that Brad take the assistant coaches as presented to the NEA at the, and perhaps clarify with Mr. Oki the numbers that he is recommending for each of those assistant coaches, renegotiate the Schedule C fees for the ones, the assistant coach positions that are already a part of Schedule C, and negotiate the assistant coach positions for those that are not currently in Schedule C.
Mr. President, this is Karen. Is this something that can be done in a week and a half, or is this something that should come to the August, the regular August board meeting?
It, it got that first, we need to manage, Mr. Cook has a motion on the floor, and we can further discuss it. Do we have support for that motion to, and I believe, Mr. Cook, correct me if I have the motion correct, but it is for Mr. Goodie to take action, renegotiating with the NEA, the Schedule C assistant position based on the amount recommended by Mr. Oki?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and then clarify with Mr. Oki, I'm sure they can do that in a week and a half. I believe we would have to have another motion once that would be done, to go ahead and hire coaches to fill those positions. So my motion is just meant to get the legwork out of the way, so we can make an informed decision on all of these at once.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Cook to take action and renegotiate with the NEA the Schedule C assistant varsity position. Do we have support?
This is Amanda Bobstein, I have support.
Okay, we have motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. Bobstein. And now let's discuss this further if needed. I think part of that discussion, we can discuss, you know, when we want to bring this to the board. I would recommend that, you know, we allow time for the negotiation with NEA, you know, throughout the month and bring this to the board on the August regular meeting. Any other comments, discussion on that motion that is on the floor?
David, it's Marty, yeah, your timeline's good. I mean, that's before school starts, I, I think, if I was a betting man, I'd say sports are going to get pushed back a little bit, so I, I think that'll be plenty of time.
Hey, when they, when they bring it back as a total, if we can also add in some of the duties, the assistant coach, Marty made a good point, the team, they're going to have to be doing health screening checks, whether there's temperature signs, whatever, but we might want to have some of these duties laid out, may help us later if there's a cross-chargeability.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. Bobstein, to take action to renegotiate with NEA the assistant varsity positions. We'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah.
Mr. Pari?
Yes.
Mrs. McQ? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yeah.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Yeah, that's approved, seven to seven, so Mr. Goodie, please proceed with that action. Next up, we have item E. This is future board virtual or in-person meetings. Wanted to have some discussion regarding this as a board, you know, as we move forward of, you know, students returning to school in August. We do have a couple of pending meetings now in August, August 6th and, and August 24th, and would like to have some discussion as a board, you know, how we determine whether, you know, moving forward beyond this evening, you know, what, how we determine virtual versus in-person meetings. So I'll open that up to the board for discussion.
Thanks, Dave. It's Marty. Thank you for putting this on. I asked to add this to the agenda today. So a couple of fun, of foundational points. Number one, Brad is absolutely correct, that the current, the current executive order does only allow 10 people at an indoor meeting. So there are, there's a lot of misinformation, which I misread at one point, that the 50 is the limit, and that is actually only in, I believe, areas seven and eight up north and in the UP. That being said, I have grave concerns that our next regularly scheduled board meeting, August 24th, is eight days before the scheduled start of school. And we're currently in Michigan Phase Four, and in Michigan Phase Four, our government has said that we can have face-to-face education with maximum safety precautions, right? So we've seen these plans from many schools at this point, and no matter what phase we're in, if we're still in Phase Four, come August 24th, I ask myself, and I would ask us as a board, to say, what message are we sending to our parents and our students that eight days later, we believe it's safe for their students to come into the building, but on August 24th, we're going to sit behind our computers at home or somewhere else and take part in a public meeting where we could easily social distance and be the example and show true leadership in this situation? And, and, and when I say that, true leadership takes And, 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 and when I say that, true leadership takes some work. That work is going to be, um, sending a letter to RISA, sending a letter to the state, sending a letter to the governor. Saying, listen, we swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America when you signed onto this board. When I signed onto this board, that's what I agreed to. And all that being said, I think it's disingenuous of me to hide behind a computer eight days before I expect students to come into school. I believe that with a properly implemented plan, we can have successful face-to-face education. I believe it's crucial to many students' learning. Uh, the teachers did an exceptional job in working through the virtual instruction that they had to, uh, back in the spring. I don't see how, um, we can start a year, um, in the school, face-to-face, and, and the leaders of this school system, um, can't do the same thing. And, and I would just ask that we consider looking at that date. And you're talking, I don't know about August sixth, that's two weeks away, and, and there's some work to do here. Because technically, if we did that, we're still in Phase Four. Unless the governor changes something in her executive order, we would be in violation of the law. And I think it's pretty clear how I feel about the law. However, we've got to do something to show support for our students and parents. That's it for now. Thanks.
Any other comments from the board?
This is Amanda Bobstein. Um, I know me and Brad has had discussions about, I know K-Pac has had their last two meetings in person. Um, Crowe's well, School District has their last three meetings in person. They were able, I don't know if that's something Brad would like to look into, but they were able to have their meetings in person and they had a separate, um, room for audience participation. It had them six feet distance and line up to come up to speak to the podium or something like that. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I think, you know, I understand we are following Governor Whitmer's executive orders and everything. But I just feel like, in general, it looks very hypocritical that we're saying in a month, it's safe to send your kids to school and everything, but we can't gather inside more than ten people. So, but I understand we are just following Governor Whitmer's executive orders. But I would just like to see something like that, if that's possible, happen to, um, what, similar to what Crowe's well, School District is doing. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bobstein. Um, any other comments by the board?
Um, this is Susan. I agree with both Mr. Cook and Mrs. Bobstein. I think, I think there, we can follow the rules with some adjustments. You know, it's, it, it's just gonna take a little work. And if it means separating out the audience, or the audience being on the video end and all of us being in one room, however we, we figure it out, I think we can, at this point, we don't really have a choice. We have to follow the governmental rules. So that limits us to ten. I assume that would get us all in one room. And then the audience would have to be either in another room or we're online. But we have, we physically would be present.
Okay, Mrs. Durst, any other comments?
Um, Mr. President, this is Karen McHugh. Um, I personally would, um, like to see that happen also. I think it would be more effective. And it would, um, send a good message also to the parents and the students. Thank you.
Okay. Any other further comments by board members? Yeah, I know the, um, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Chris.
No, just to, just to follow along, 'cause I think we, we'd all love to be in person and, and comply at the same time. Is the tent, is there any way we can hook up the tent for outside as well, Brad? The one they're currently using for, for band? That could allow us the face-to-face plus the audience?
I can contact, I can contact the company and see if they'd be available.
I mean, that, that would even break us the barrier from having us in the two separate rooms. We could have the audience and, audience right there with us. It's a hundred percent face.
Okay. Yeah, I am. Um, any other comments, other board members? Yeah, the, um, the, the current executive order allowing for remote participation at school board meetings, I believe, if I understand correctly, it's Executive Order one twenty-nine, twenty twenty dash one twenty-nine. I think it expires the end of this month, um, seven thirty-one. So I'm curious to see, you know, what the governor will do, if she'll extend that one or, or with the, um, with the, um, you know, thought of students coming back, if, if it'll be allowed to expire. So I think we can, um, in addition, watch that. Because obviously, if that does not renew, then, um, the decision is pretty clear that, you know, we have to have in-person meetings. So I think we can take some guidance from that as a board. Um, you know, I did, um, even look around a bit, um, to other school districts, you know, regarding this meeting. Um, and I was a bit confused by the executive order as, as others were. And, you know, there were, um, you know, others in the area still having, um, virtual meetings tonight. But there wasn't any indication, um, you know, of upcoming meetings in August, you know, whether they were, they were remote, remote or that. Um, so I think, you know, a lot of others are waiting, um, to see what happens as well. But, you know, I've stated in many, many meetings leading up to this one this year that I'm anxious to, you know, to get together as a board face-to-face again and, um, you know, move forward with that. So, um, I think there are some ideas that were put out here tonight. Um, you know, one being a separate room for comment, um, in order to, to meet the ten-person, um, limit per room. Um, maybe some challenges of that, granted, we have seven on the board and, you know, administration and, um, you know, depending on how many show up for public, um, public comment as well. Um, maybe it becomes a hybrid version, um, where it's both virtual and, and, um, you know, in-person. Or, um, you know, we could consider taking it outside as well. So, um, I guess I'd like some, some clear direction from the board. Um, you know, how we want to go about making this decision or, um, it's something we wanna discuss at the August sixth meeting. Um, you know, once again, if that expires prior to August sixth, then we'll have to meet in-person.
Dave, I think it makes sense to revisit on the sixth, if we know more about the expiration of this order, uh, coming at the end of the month. And then, um, you know, have additional discussion about, understand the, the concerns of the, the consisting messages that it has, and I, I appreciate that myself at the same time. Um, that, that there's a lot more variables I think we have to consider to public meetings and guidelines that are out there. So, um, plenty of time before the next meeting to do that. Uh, but again, like, like you mentioned, that may change in a couple of days here. So hopefully we'll know more at the turn of the month.
Okay, then, Mrs. O'Connor, any other comments from the board?
Um, this is Susan. Kind of as a backup, can Brad, can you check on the availability of the tent if we, if we go that direction?
Yes, I absolutely will. Yep. And if not that one, I know that we do have, um, a staff member that has a few smaller ones that we could possibly get also.
Thank you.
Is there anything that could be done, um, in order to have this, uh, meeting on eight-six in-person? Um, like I said, uh, if the executive order one twenty-nine expires, um, um, the decision is made for us. But, um, I'd like to, to be prepared for all instances. So, um, you know, if, uh, if by chance that order is renewed, um, you know, do we want to try and, uh, do that workshop as a virtual meeting? Or, um, try to come up with an outdoor venue or, or some other option?
My opinion is that if, if we're going to really put some meat into this, this meeting, we have to be in-person. It, it becomes really difficult, I think, to, to really share ideas when we're, when we're looking at the TV screen or the computer screen. And I'm speaking of the workshop. You know, I think that it, it's a very, very sensitive issue. And I think that we need to be able to, to see each other as opposed to just hear each other.
Dave, um, you know, the other thing I was thinking, I think we have some pavilions at some of our township halls. Um, I can contact to see availability for those as well. Um, but if we wanna, if you wanna give me the directive to make an outdoor event happen on the sixth, um, I will contact, and that, you know, obviously we'll wait to see if there's any changes on, on the executive orders. Maybe I'll give it to fifty and then we could have it here. Um, but I can make sure we have something arranged if, um, they're only allowing ten indoors at that time.
Okay, any other, um, comments regarding the eight-six meeting?
Um, Mr. President, this is Karen. I think that's a great idea. Brad could look into, um, some sort of, um, way to meet outside if, you know, if, if the executive order does not go through.
And looking at the weather, Thursday is supposed to be eighty-two, so we should be fine.
Right, I'll, uh, I'll, anything further from the board? All right, I'll, I'll make a motion then to, or I'll move to, um, for Mr. Goodme to take action to seek a, um, an outdoor venue for the August sixth meeting, um, in compliance with, um, you know, current executive orders at the time. Is there support for that motion?
This is Amanda Bobstein. I support. Um, this is Karen. I support.
Okay, we have, uh, Mrs. Bobstein on the support. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on that action.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah.
Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
And Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
The motion is approved, seven-seven. Great, so now we're on to item twelve, superintendent comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a few things. I wanna compliment Matt and, and Susan and, um, the work they've been putting in on our preparedness plan. Um, I, I sit on meetings two, three times a week and the state is continually changing expectations and guidance and continually throwing curveballs at us. Um, so they've done a good job of meeting with their staff. Their staff has been great to work with as well. Um, I have another meeting tomorrow with the M E A to try to finalize all instruction plans. Um, but the plan is in good shape and, uh, you know, so a few details being finalized, we should be good for approval on Thursday, next Thursday. Um, no other districts have taken it for approval yet. I believe Port Huron is the first one that they were taking it to a meeting, uh, this evening for their approval. So, um, we've been meeting with Port Huron and, and the rest of the county and trying to get everybody's input as well. Uh, we are starting to, working to stay unified, so we have support of the county. Um, been working with the M Y B S O to fix up the, uh, baseball softball field behind the elementary school. I've been in contact with Josh Bobstein several times. And it looks like we've got some donors that are gonna give us some, uh, field topping, as well as hopefully get some, uh, repairs to the fencing back there to get that field in use. Um, Mr. Pringle's been doing a great job of keeping up and he's actually helping out and going over and cutting their field at the American Legion. Uh, we are helping to try to maintain that. So when we do get back into playing games, everything will be in, in good shape. So other than that, uh, we continue to work hard at making everything ready for instruction, uh, in about a month. So that is all. Good time.
Any further questions for Mr. Goodme regarding the superintendent report?
Yeah, I think, uh, go ahead. Go ahead, Amanda.
I just wanna take a moment to say, uh, thank you on behalf of M Y B S O for stepping up and volunteering to take care of the field for us at the Legion Hall. Um, coming from, like, M Y B S O is obviously taking a hit not having a season this year. And being a small community, anything that we can get to help alleviate some of financial, um, off of us by having the school mow the grass and take care of the field is more than appreciated. And we just wanna bear much thank you for that.
Glad it worked out.
Mr. President? Yeah, okay.
All right, Mr. Cook?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Goodme, I, I saw on your Friday file, I believe it was last week's Friday file, that we've got our plan almost done. O- obviously the sixth is coming upon us soon. And it sounds like that's gonna be, uh, um, a packed meeting again. Can you share with us tonight where we're at so far? So can you give us the, the up-to-now of where we're at with the school plan, just so we can take a look at?
No.
Or do it all at once?
Yeah, I can share you, uh, it's, it's very similar. So the document I shared on Friday final, um, the health department guidance, um, and the template that we're using, where we have not put anything into the template yet. We do have some, I guess some of the guidance is in the template. But, um, basically, everything is on our notes. So if you'd like me to scan some of that and share what our, our plan is, I can do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, the other thing, uh, so thank you for that. Um, I, you know, obviously since our last board meeting, a lot has gone on and, and, and there's been a, a lot of publicity around our school. And I- around our school, and I've gotta ask the question that, that needs to be asked, Mr. Goodme, is, um, we, we heard an account of the parade day, uh, earlier during public comment, I, I've gotta ask the question based on the facts and the, the statement that was made earlier, um, can you kind of, of, of that day and, and understanding, uh, what happened?
Uh, as far as meetings, um, I know that, I'm guessing that's who you're referring to, I was approached and asked that if I had a meeting to give approval for the flag to be flown through the senior parade, and no, that did not happen. I had an agreement, uh, with the family to allow the student to, um, drive the flag in and cover it up anytime he was parked on school grounds, um, you know, as far as me giving permission for it, that, that is not the case. I've been working with the family for the last year, I think we even started at the end of last year talking about it, um, so.
No.
Go ahead.
That wasn't me.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, so, you know, as far as us giving permission for that to be flown in the parade, no, we, we did not give permission to it to be, for it to be flown, um, you know, student came on campus, we did not stop it at that time, it was a drive-through, they drove through campus, and, uh, and moved on with the parade through town, and, I don't know, I think they ended at the American Legion Hall.
Did the police officer that led, led that parade share with any Memphis administrator, to the best of your knowledge, his uncomfortability with that flag flying?
I believe there was a phone call and asked if he should ask it to be taken down, and it was said to ask him.
Who was that phone call made to?
Uh, one of our administrators. I don't know that we should be identifying people.
Uh, well, i- in, in this case, I, I, we'd look, we'd, I'd like to get to the truth of what happened here, so, um, I guess, thank you, Mr. Goodme, um, so as far as your concern, the day of the parade, um, you did not discuss with anybody, um, having the flag on the truck, is that, is that, is that your statement?
I did not give permission to anybody to fly that tr- on, the flag on the truck.
Did you discuss it with anyone?
No permission was given to fly the, the flag.
Not my question, sir, did you discuss it with anyone?
I believe I always asked my thoughts on it, yes.
And what were your thoughts on it?
That we can ask them to take it down, and that was where it was went, to Officer Gunnery to ask him to take it down.
So your statement in the Times Herald that says, "Goodme said the flag is not permitted at the district and prompts intervention when displayed by a student," did you, did you say that to the Times Herald reporter?
To the voice reporter, I told her that we have worked with that student to not drive it on school grounds.
Okay, that wasn't my question, Mr. Goodme, did you say the flag is not permitted at the district?
I told Mrs. Templeton that we have worked with that student over the years to not allow it to be flown on school grounds.
Are you aware of the article that I'm referring to in the Times Herald, it is not the article that, that the reporter you've mentioned wrote?
Uh, no, I'm not, I have not seen one in the Times Herald regarding that.
Okay.
The Times Herald reporter contacted me about that, and we told, I, the conversation was not directly related to the flag even with the Times Herald, um, he asked about any type of Confederate flags, and we said that we do not allow them on school grounds, because he had asked about, um, hats, shirts, belt buckles, et cetera, so we told him that we do not allow those on school grounds, and we ask students to remove them when they're worn.
So we don't allow those on school grounds, that's our position, correct? Your position, correct?
That is correct.
And so how did one become to be on the school grounds for a yearbook photo, sir?
I did not notice it, and I assume administration did not see it that day when the picture was taken.
So is it, is it your statement that no administration member has asked you for guidance or support on removing that symbol from the school at any time?
I've had numerous conversations with administration about that, and when students are aware of them on school grounds, we ask them to remove them.
You ask them or tell them?
I guess I'd have to ask the administration how they approach a student, but usually it's, we ask them to and they comply.
Okay, is that different than is not permitted? Because you just said it's not permitted.
If a student does not follow our, a, a request to remove them, then we would tell them to, but we have not had that situation that I'm aware of. So when students are asked to remove those, a hat, a shirt, a buckle, whatever it may be, they have complied, and we have, if I, if I recollect correctly, we have, um, actually confiscated items in the past.
Okay, so the afternoon of the parade, when the gentleman was asked to remove it from his truck, and he didn't, was he told to?
I do not know that.
And why don't you know that?
I did not have a follow-up conversation with the, the officer that asked him to remove it.
Were you present at this parade?
I was in attendance, yes.
So you were physically present?
Yes, I was.
So for now, Mr. President.
Any other questions regarding the superintendent report?
This is Audrey, I just, I, I know that you're gonna share what you have so far for the school reopening, um, and we're gonna have another meeting following this one, uh, next week, but is there anything that stands out, is a major concern, or hurdle other feedbacks you've gotten from parents, teachers, students, administration, um, that are the critical items of focus, uh, over the next month or so?
Yes, the, the instruction piece of, um, students being out for a, an extended period of time, so basically with the guidance, the requirement is that if a student shows symptoms of COVID-19, they are be, to be, um, isolated for ten days, so we have a lot of concerns of the number of students that are probably gonna be gone for an extended period of time, um, the number of kids that'll be out at the same time for that, and at that point, it's hard to throw them into an online program, um, you know, the students that choose to take an online program up front, w- we put them in the, the program, if it's Michigan Virtual for High School Kids or Edgenuity for Elementary Kids, whatever it may be, that program is gonna move along at its own pace, but for us, they have a student that says, you know, in October, um, all of a sudden has symptoms and they have to be isolated for ten days, um, it's gonna be a very difficult, um, instructional part for us, so that's what we're working with the staff in right now, is trying to find a good way to be able to apply quality instruction to those students, if it's recording lessons, um, or finding a different platform to do that, so that will be the basis of our, our meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else regarding superintendent reports?
Uh, Anthony, I'm gonna finish typing with Rob and make the, uh, better.
All right, uh, we'll move on to board roundtable. Um, and, and before we do that, um, I apologize, we set that meeting for August sixth, um, and I believe Mr. Parry had mentioned, um, that he was traveling, um, and then we determined that we wanted to try and make it an outdoor venue, um, Mr. Parry, are, are you, are you unavailable in person that evening?
I will change the travel plans.
I appreciate that.
Oh.
Um, uh, I guess we'll go roundtable here, um, we'll start with, uh, Mrs. Durst, do you have anything for board roundtable?
Uh, I, the only thing I have is that, uh, on the fourth of August, uh, the grounds and facilities committee is going to be making rounds at the elementary school, and hopefully we'll get through that rather rapidly and, uh, maybe be able to head over to the high school, check out things there, but we're meeting in person and we'll follow all the guidelines and, uh, gonna kick up our committee again.
Thank you for that. Um, this is Bobstein, anything for the board roundtable? Uh, Mrs. O'Connor?
I'm good, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cook?
Yeah, I've said a couple of things, um, Mr. Karafar, are you on the line? Yes, sir, I'm here. Mr. Karafar, uh, thank you, um, good evening, sorry it's so late, um, I'd like to ask you a couple of very specific questions.
Okay.
Have you at any time in your tenure here at Memphis Community Schools, um, had issues with Confederate flags of any kind, the symbol, the Confederate flag symbol in the school that you can recall?
Um, ye- uh, well, uh, yes, I think, I think, uh, in my first year there, there was a, uh, time where we're referring, it was the virtue earlier, I guess, with the, uh, the flag being flown on a particular truck or vehicle, uh, into the school parking lot, that's the initial, and I was kind of exposed to it within the school at Memphis, that was my first year, that was like, um, seventeen, eighteen.
Okay, and what did you do?
Well, uh, initial, initially my, my reaction was to, uh, to tell the student to not have it, um, I asked them to remove it, um, I think there might, there might have been more than one student that day, it might be two at the max, but I asked them to remove it, um, which I, that day, the student did comply, um, but then I think it was maybe the next day or the day after, I think it was kind of one of those things where the boys or the students, it was the students were, um, I guess trying to test some authorities, I guess, and so after that first initial day, um, uh, after that first initial day, the, somebody, someone painted the rock out front with, uh, like, some things, you know, there was a rock out front of the, you know, for seniors, and the rock out front with something along lines of, you know, go, you know, you had my name, like Mr. Kane had a line to it, like an arrow, you know, circle the line to it, like, go away, and then, um, uh, there was a couple, like, you know, rebel flags drawn on the rock, once they go back to Detroit, Karafar, I, I, if you don't recall my history, I initially came to Memphis after serving in Detroit for a couple, a couple of years, um, so, so when that occurred, you know, I never, I don't know who did that, I'd never found out, you know, and hey, you got it, it wasn't, wasn't a huge deal, I think I went out and spray painted it myself, but maybe it was, maybe Mr. Coogee had, someone, a couple of us went out there and we spray painted over it right away, but, uh, you know, that was the initial exposure, but after that, I, I, the student, again, had the flag, and that's when I said, not, not gonna be allowed, um, and that's kind of like, that's kind of like the introduction I had to, I guess, it goes, uh, in spring, I think, of eighteen, my first year.
Okay, thank you, and did you ever bring this to your immediate supervisor's attention?
Uh, yeah, yes, Brad and I talked about it a little bit, um, because I had told him, you know, I, I had the flag, and I told him not to do it, um, I had spoken to a parent as well about it, and I said, you know, I'm not gonna permit it, and he kind of, it kind of ended there, you know, he just, the parent just said that he would just be speaking to, to someone else about the issue, and that was kind of the, the, um, the initial discussion I had, that I had about it.
Thank you, and did your immediate supervisor give any direction regarding this issue?
Uh, in- initially, we talked about, um, talking to the student about, um, you know, what the symbol means, what does it symbolize, you know, what does it mean to you, um, you know, what does it mean to the other kids in the building or, or other people, you know, things like that, and I talked about, I guess, educating on the, on the symbol or, or what the symbol means today, I guess, because it can be, you know, everyone's got their things on what it means, and everyone's, you know, I respect all the opinions, um, so initially we talked about that, um, then when I spoke to the parent, it was kind of like, I, I, again, reiterated that I didn't want to see that on the, on the property, and, um, after that, he did tell, you know, he outspoken, and when I talked to Brad the next day, or maybe the next day or the following weekend, I don't know, he said that, you know, he, he talked to the parent, and they just decided that he could fly it in, cover it up, uncover it and fly it out of the parking lot. Or have it exposed, I guess you'd call it.
To the best, thank, thanks, th- thank, thank you, um, thank you, man, um, so, to the best of your knowledge, uh, or to your recollection, have any teachers approached you in the last year, two years, uh, regarding this issue, uh, outside of that particular issue, so, um, with that symbol inside the school?
Um, teachers, I, there have been a couple, maybe one or two that have questioned it, um, after that incident, initially I, yeah, I did tell them, I said, if you see it, I said, if you see it, you know, tell them to get rid of it, you know, tell them to take it off, turn it inside out, whatever it was, and that's kind of how it started, it, it kind of started that way, there was a few t-shirts and things like the school so, or, or a hat or whatever, and I would tell them to take it off, turn it around, and then when the flag thing happened, it became a different, it, it kind of escalated a little bit after that.
Okay, let's fast forward to the parade, uh, just about a month ago, or so, a couple of months ago, were you present for that parade?
Uh, yes, sir.
And were you contacted by the police officer, um, regarding this issue?
Uh, yeah, he did call me and asked me, you know, what, what, what I thought, what I should do, um, or what he should do, um, he said, uh, you know, there's, there's a car out here in the parade line with a big rebel flag, uh, so he called me to, to ask me what to do, I said, well, I said, you can, I said, you can ask him to, to take it down, um, I said, but he has been allowed to fly it into the property, cover it up when he's here, and then, and then take it off when he leaves, uh, so he, I, I, I don't know the exact extent of it, but I believe Officer Gunnery did ask him about it, but I don't know, obviously the, the student or the, the individual didn't want to remove it or, or, or didn't, maybe he, they didn't have a discussion about it, but he did call me about that, and I told him, uh, what, what had been discussed, and what had been, I guess, the deal that was made, and that's kind of how we approached it. Um, I, I, I saw him, I was in the, I was actually in the student lot when the parade came through, so I was in the cabota, which is a little, uh, utility vehicle we have, and I was in the cabota, and I was kind of honking the horn at the kids, waving to them, um, and that, that particular vehicle was towards the end of the, um, parade, maybe not the last wave, I think we came in four different gr- four different groups of, our primary students, but it was towards the end of that, uh, maybe the third or fourth wave of students, so he came through there, and at that point, he was already into the student lot before I even noticed him, he was driving out, you know, so, you know, so he did make it through the entire parking lot.
Okay, and did you bring this up on the day of the parade to your immediate supervisor?
Um, I believe we did discuss it, uh, a little bit, uh, I think myself, my assistant principal, and my, my superintendent were kind of chatting about, a little bit about that Sean, he called me about it, and that Sean was going to approach him about it.
Okay, you, I assume you heard earlier, um, during public comment that the vehicles were at the school twenty minutes before that happened, right?
I'm sorry, Marty, Mr. Cook, you were cutting out a little bit there, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, um, I assume you heard earlier in the public comment that, um, the parade vehicles were in the parking lot for-
in the parking lot for a good 20 minutes before the parade started. Is that accurate?
The parade vehicles? Um, well, the vehicles lined up on Braidwood, I believe. 20 minutes prior, but I don't, I don't know if they were in the parking lot or not 20 minutes prior, because Officer, uh, the officer was in the parking lot with me, he said he was going to take off at quarter two, to Braidwood to make sure the line was in order. So, I don't believe that the cars were, that cars of the parade were in the parking lot, but we were in, like, the staff and anyone that was gonna watch was in the parking. I believe the vehicles were all on Braidwood.
Okay. Mr. Krapp, I have a few very special questions, and now, and then I'll be done. Um, who approved that flag to be flown in that parade, in your opinion, and your knowledge?
Uh, well, in my opinion, uh, my knowledge, I, I, the only thing I can say is that I think that, the only thing I can say is that this, I believe that the student felt it was okay because of the fact that he had been allowed to drive it into the school prior to that. So, if he was driving it in and out prior to that, I think that he felt like this is no other thing, it wasn't necessarily a school sponsor event, so I'm thinking that that's the student. Okay, after the student's thinking, so to your question is, who do I think approved it? I think that was a, a decision that would maybe be the parent of the student and the, and the, and the superintendent.
Okay.
You believe or you don't? You're assuming?
Well, no, I'm sorry. Pardon, pardon me, it might seem, I have the floor right now, I'm gonna have to poop that, uh, at this time.
What was my opinion?
No problem. So, I just want to understand, um, it was said earlier that, and I quote, "The symbol is not allowed in our school." Yet, we've had, um, what you just described, there's several instances where students have worn clothing or displayed in some way that symbol at school, right? So, my question is, have you ever been told by anyone related to Memphis Public Schools to just let it go until someone complains?
I would say not necessarily in those words. Um, I think...
What words would you say, then?
Well, I think the discussion was more of, um, if, you know, if it's not, uh, if you look at the policy, uh, the board policy talks about possibly images or, I don't talk about possibly, but, but images or things that would be found, um, to create a disturbance or to cause a distraction. I think that it was, it was, uh, um, I think it was stated that if it was something that was not creating a disturbance, that we would not, uh, intervene, uh, unless it was creating, uh, a disturbance amongst, amongst individuals in the building, I guess.
Was that your statement or someone else's statement?
Uh, that was, well, I, just on a, on a separate note, I guess, from just from where I, where I've been in the past, in buildings I've been in the past, that I've never, I've never actually had to deal with it in a building before. Um, so, so that, my, my initial belief was to, let's, let's just get rid of it, let's not worry about it, um, you know, let's not have to deal with it. Um, so that would not be, I guess that would not be my statement, I guess.
So, whose statement would that be, to the best of your recollection?
Um, well, that would be a discussion that I had with, uh, superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krapp. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Mr. President, I'm gonna end right there, but I do reserve the right to come back, uh, once my other colleagues have had a chance.
Mr. Parry, any comment for Board Roundtable?
No comment, Mr. Parry.
Mrs. McQ, any comment for Roundtable?
Um, yes, I, I just wanted to, um, on a more positive note, um, thank Brad, Crapp, and the administration for all the work that you are, have done and are doing to prepare our school for our students and staff during this very unprecedented time that we are in right now. Thank you.
Hey, I don't, uh, have anything further this evening. Um, Mr. Cook, do you care to speak anymore on the Roundtable?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my, my, my only statement that I would make is, um, it's unfortunate that I had to put Mr. Krapp through that questioning, because it was asking him to do something very uncomfortable. However, the truth, whether it's unpleasant or not positive, in some people's minds, is the truth. And the truth is, the leader of our school district, the CEO, allowed this to happen when he was principal, and now that he's superintendent. And frankly, I would have been, I would have respected, I would have shown much more respect, had the truth just come out that, yes, I allowed this, I shouldn't have, but I did. Instead, we get denial, 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 untruth, untruth, untruth. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I'm sick of it. That's it, Mr. President.
Raise anything further from the board? Do we have anything for closed session this evening? No, we do not. Okay, at this point, we're at the adjournment. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Cook.
This is Amanda Bobstein, support.
Motion by Mr. Cook, scored by Mr. Bobstein, to adjourn the meeting at 10:19 PM. We'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mrs. McQ?
Yes.
Mr. Cook? Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.